Twenty-four, City Council Agenda Review and Questions. Counselor Ireland, did you still want to take some things off consent agenda?
I'm not really thrilled with the downtown and the other hundred and some thousand, because I want to know what our plan is for that street. We have no plan.
Which item is?
It's E, is it E?
E, okay.
Do we have a plan or are we just spending money there?
Well, I mean, I guess I could start, and we've got the city engineers here, but, you know, the Benton Street is the easternmost street that connects the north end of the downtown with the south end of the downtown. So it's part of the infrastructure that we have designed and built to eventually see entirely built out downtown. But, you know, the city's responsible for the infrastructure and the road, Benton Road is one of those. But City Engineer John Burke can probably share a better, more detailed analysis of why, why and why now.
Mayor and councilors think of the question. So yes, the Benton Street is actually about sixty percent complete as we speak today. So all the utility work underground is in place. What's remaining is the rest of the asphalt, sidewalk, curb, gutter, and street lights on that project. Like our city manager has mentioned, it's to finish out the grid of downtown Westminster.
Okay, and so I know that it's zoned commercial and commercial real estate isn't doing that well right now, so we have no plan there?
That's a great question. I know our Economic Development Director, Lindsay Kimble, I think responded earlier today on some of that strategy on marketing for that. If you want to come down and answer that, but generally speaking, absolutely, it's set up for commercial real estate on that side, and the team is working hard to get it.
Hello, Lindsay Kimble, thank you, thank you. Lindsay Kimble, Community Services Director. And to help answer the question, so we have in place the downtown plan, which we started several years ago. And we've been piece by piece, we have a timeline that we've been implementing with roadways. We've always, as John said, had a grid network proposed there. And just like any other part of the city, you know, we are putting in those public pieces of infrastructure to support that. And part of that plan is having the infrastructure in place obviously adds value to the sites and it helps with the attraction of those users. It's a little harder to bring somebody out to a site and say, just imagine there'll be a road here someday, instead of there actually being the road and the infrastructure there in place. So it's all part of that plan that we've been working for a decade now.
So have you had any interest in the area so far?
Yes, yes ma'am. There has been interest, not only on the east side, which is for the office, which as you noted, it is, it is slowed down throughout the entire country. But part of that also on the other side of Benton Street is for multifamily, for housing, for townhomes potentially. So there's other uses there as well as cultural uses or could be educational uses as well as access to East Park.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're, if we're going to finish it, I guess we need to finish it, so.
And are we good on B?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any thing? City Council reports, Councilor Simon?
Counselor Carmelio? Yes, I've got several items. So I'll start with one of the, well, never mind, that one's on our agenda, never mind. I'll just say that I was at the event with the open space with the dog park, and I was grateful for the level of participation there. And I think that we all, residents and staff and council, learned a lot more about the situation than we'd been aware of. So I'm grateful for the city's effort in putting that together. That went really well. I do want to follow up briefly on the disc golf situation, which I think that we will be bringing up at some point. I'm hoping that staff will follow up on our request about the options that we had talked about a few weeks ago. Whether we have the availability to do like a nine-hole golf there, or whether we can do the full disc golf course that we had been hoping to do originally. Or whether that really will interfere with the trail, as was mentioned, and so I'm not sure if we have an ETA on the follow-up there. I'll just say, I'm sure we get a more full report from Counselor Demott, but as far as the airport is concerned, I was disappointed to see that the results of the study were rejected before the FAA could review them. And far as I could tell from the email updates this week, there will be no real change forthcoming after all the time and effort that both residents have put in for options and that the C N R has put in. And then I'll say that for One Book, that was an amazing event. I ended up meeting with the author, Erica Worth, which was really great. And I'm really grateful for the staff's time and efforts from Parks, Rec, and Libraries for putting together the One Book. I know that they did it for the first time last year, and I'm really grateful to come up with new ideas for bringing the community together, which is something that I've been hoping to see more of, and that was a great event. And then, of course, I attended the Ralston House event the other night, which I'm also very grateful to have been invited to such an impactful event for youth in our community. And then I just wanted to mention that I did have to miss the tours and topics last week for the Chief of Staff, and so I'm grateful that the info was sent out. And I apologize for missing that work last week was not, I was late a lot. And then I'll just say this much, it is on our agenda, but as far as the Greenway Trail and Indy and the Street overpass, I want to bring it up because I don't, I think that other councilors have received maybe an email or two. But I have been inundated with dozens and dozens and dozens of emails. Okay, a few of us have. And I think that that's because our residents believe that I am someone who is passionate about this topic, which they are correct in believing. And I just want them to know that they are heard and we will discuss it further tonight.
It was at least a hundred emails, I think.
Yeah.
So I listened to the Jefferson County Commissioner and Mayor, and I saw Nancy, I mean, Mayor McNally there, and I saw Counselor Carmelia there. Anyway, I, I have a problem with my WebEx, so, just so you know. No one can see me, I can hear you, and I can't say anything. So anyway, I've had that, and Zoom, I'm fine, so I don't know what's going on. But anyway, I did listen into that meeting. They said ridership on light rail is way down to downtown because no one, not many people are working downtown anymore. And a lot of people are using it to get to events like Taylor Swift concerts or, you know, anything to do with sporting events. And so they're wondering if maybe they should take a different approach to that. What else did I take away from that? I know their concern about Tabor and paying for RTD. They would like to get around Tabor, get rid of Tabor. And they wanted to do it via putting it on the ballot with open space. So the people think that their open space is going to be taken away if they don't vote for this. So I was not really happy with that lack of transparency in Jefferson County on that. Anyway. I did also listen today to the state bill about funding light rail bus service for the tenure plan. They want to do it via rental cars, a fee on rental cars, three dollars for a day for gas rental cars. If it's electric when a car, two dollars a day. So they want the people that are renting cars in our area to pay for the infrastructure for more light rail and more bus lines to the mountains for the ski resorts and so forth. So that's what I listened into today.
I just want to follow up. Thank you for doing that report. I completely missed that. I was present as well, and I will back up everything that was just reported. So I was present for the Jeffco breakfast, and we learned a lot about the needs of the RTD and how they're falling short on their budget and what they're trying to do right now to mitigate forthcoming concerns. So that was interesting, yeah.
Counselor Demott?
I attended the R M A C N R on Thursday, and like you heard, essentially the, we got the report of the consultants. I shared that with council. It was sent to us after the meeting, and so I sent that to you all so that you could look it over. And they had a lot of different recommendations, and it was given to the FAA. And the next step would have been for us to decide whether or not, if the FAA said it was viable and that we could do it, then we could have voted on whether or not we wanted to try out some of the recommendations from the consultants. The representative from Boulder County said that they weren't going to support it. And so the way that the C N R works is if one member of the C N R does not support something, then it doesn't happen. So they did, the motion, I think, was to basically to reject the thing. And I don't remember honestly the votes because it really didn't matter because there was Boulder, Superior, not, I don't, no Superior voted present. So it was Boulder, Louisville, and I can't remember the other municipality, but they voted against it. So basically, it died in our work that we spent sixty thousand plus dollars on. Doesn't even come back to us to decide whether or not we want to use it. So I think it was, from my perspective, was a frustrating meeting to have that because I know that that's something that the public has asked us about, the money we've spent on that. And then they got into a conversation about, well, real quick, the interim director, which is the county manager, serving as the interim director of the airport, shared some of the stuff coming up. They, this next week, well, on Tuesday, and I honestly don't know what happened with it, but on Tuesday, no, they were voting for the approval for the funds for the Part 150 study formally. They, and something with that has some money that they can get from a, you know, government entity, I think. So they wanted to make sure they got that in time so that they didn't have to wait till April of twenty twenty-five in order to do that. But they felt comfortable with where they were going with that. They also, she shared that the process for the new replacement director is underway. It's been put out. Their goal is to get the, once they have everybody apply, is to get it down to six and then to narrow that down to two. Once they narrow it down to two, that's where they would do kind of a public town hall where people could go and actually meet the two finalists. And their hope is to have, it sounded like an offer out probably in May and hopefully have that person in place by June. Then the conversation from there, the other big thing was, what are we going to do moving forward? There were certainly some members that said that they didn't think that they should continue. I really pushed into that because one of the things that was my understanding was how we get to participate in the Part 150. That Part 150 study, if you know anything about it, basically, will be about a two-year process. And as they go through that actual study, that has potential for federal funds for noise mitigation. I would think we would want to be at the table for that conversation, is my opinion. So I don't know if some of the C N R members may come back and say they want to leave, but the conversation that is going to be had this next meeting is where the C N R goes from here. I, for one, out of this body, would say that I think we should stay. I don't know for sure if we'll, at a minimum, I would think that we would stay at the level of funding that we had before they raised it because we don't really have any expenditures at this point. I don't even know if they'll ask for that level of spending because at this point, it's really for us to continue to have a place for people to voice their concerns, us be able to try to address those with FAA, and ultimately get to participate in this Part 150 study. Trustee Cerbo, he did not bring that item that you all spoke about for a vote. They, he, basically because the town of Superior said that they didn't support it, or at least not fully. He, and he did have a lot of residents who showed up who, you know, came to say that they supported, you know, his thing. Likewise, there were people who opposed it, but I thought it was interesting that he had residents who showed up to basically say they thought it was good work. But he did just at least present it, and his point of presenting it as an information only was that he wanted to know, you know, that these are potential things that we could look at to try to help the situation. And I, for one, appreciate that. I did share with him at that time that we had four to three, if it were not permanent and it could be backed out, that we would have supported it had it come to a vote. So, so I guess that's really the ask is if, and maybe we don't talk about it now, but before the next meeting, I do think that we should think about whether or not we want to stay. I would advocate that we do. I think that it's worthwhile. It's, you know, it's painful and slow and all the things that come along with it, but at the end of the day, you're either at the table or you're on the menu, and I would rather be at the table.
Thanks. Mayor Protem?
So I also wanted to just follow up on that as well and just get a better understanding of what the next steps would be for the C N R. And it looks like that's kind of to, to be determined to some extent.
It, it is, but I think that knowing where we're at will help in that conversation for next time because they are going to talk about it next time. And so I, I think each of the representatives, we're going to go back to their respective body and say, what do you want to do? You know, much like me, I, we would like to make sure that, you know, our bodies are on board if we're going to continue on, obviously, because ultimately, we speak for whatever group we're a member of.
Okay, so, oh, did they say anything about the bill in the state twenty, what, twenty-four, one, two, three, five, or whatever?
No, I mean, because that's specifically, that's all.
It's about noise and lead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, it was brought up, but I don't recall us as a body talking about it. There were members of the public that brought it up, but I don't remember anybody in the body specifically addressing it.
Is that coming up with our lobbyists? Is she coming back?
Yes, we actually have an update tonight on a couple bills.
We're going to talk about that tonight?
That one tonight? No.
That's an important one, I think, we should talk about.
Yeah, I feel like we're not quite clearly done with figuring out just how to address the airport. And, you know, for me, yes, I want to know how we will utilize the C N R and how that relates specifically to the Part 150 study. And I'd really like to understand how they're going to run that process and is the C N R a critical, you know, steering element of that process?
There was, there was some argument about that on Thursday because I asked that very question because it was presented to us that we were going to be a very important part of the community input into the Part 150. And so when it was moved across from the representative of Boulder that basically the C N R wasn't worth having, I said, well, what about the Part 150? We were told that we needed to be a part of that if that's going to, you know, do what it needs to do. And she responded that it didn't need to be, but I kind of saw some, like, shaking of the head from the interim airport director. And, you know, the, kind of got ended before I think she got to kind of address it, just one of those meetings, I guess, is what I would say. So I, I think it's a fair question, and I think some of it, time will tell. And I mean, you know, if we're present, we are definitely getting to, I mean, the way that it's been proposed is we would be part of that process. Like, so the members of the C N R would get to speak into that process as they move down the road. I mean, that's been the, the conversation around that.
I'm wondering if in the next C N R meeting, that if it can somehow be on the agenda for each municipality to kind of take stock of where, what are they hearing from their community, what are their concerns, and see if there's any type of common values or elements that the group can identify that they could work together on outside of, you know, the, obviously, I want to emphasize being a part of the Part 150 study. But, you know, for instance, are being able to share, we had C D P H E come in.
So there is a portion where we get to do that.
Okay.
And so like, for example, I did share my view on the, you know, C D P H E coming. And I had shared that with the C N R, and I told them, you know, if you can't make it, please review this because we have it on YouTube, and I had shared that with them. But, you know, we do have a report-out position where if there are certain things we want to try to address, we can. But specifically, this last time I shared with them again, you know, and the members of the public that were there, that we had that meeting, and it was in my mind of value to go watch if you're interested in the concerns around lead.
So, okay, that, that was good that we're doing that, and, I mean, hopefully, everybody else is participating to that level. Outside of the C N R, I think, are being able to, you know, work with staff to identify some elements that we can work with the community on. And, you know, we talked last week with C D P H E about, you know, some educational opportunities for the community. I did pass on, may not have seen it, because I passed it on earlier today, an email with an attached flyer that was just an educational flyer that was from another, I believe, state. But just kind of getting the, the thoughts rolling on how can we work with the community and be productive, potentially outside or alongside the C N R work that we're doing.
And the city manager and I talked about that?
Okay.
Pre-meeting?
So Mayor Protem, Mayor councilors, after the C D P H E meeting last week, I sent a note to the three school superintendents, shared with them a link to the presentation from C D P H E, and also gave them a link to C D P H E's Give Me One Minute campaign, which they presented and spoke about last Monday evening. And that's essentially a pre-screen, if you will, that if you're, you know, subject to the following, you should get your blood lead level checked at your local doctor provider. And so have shared that with the three school districts that are resident inside of Westminster. And then also asked our communications team to take the Give Me One Minute campaign that was presented last Monday evening and start pushing that out as a routine measure in our social media messaging to, again, bring awareness to the community. But that's really step one is, you know, to know whether you're at risk, and if you believe you are at risk based upon that pre-test, get yourself tested. And so already took those actions last week, and regarding the pamphlet, I'll send that pamphlet. I noticed it was from California Public Health, and I'll send that to C D P H E. I'm not going to step, you know, in their lane, but make sure that they have that because it was dual-language, good, good document, and see if that's something that might be helpful.
Well, I, I appreciate that. It would be helpful to have this written down so that we can just react to it instead of just hearing it verbally. And I know that there are other things that we're hoping to hear in terms of just some input around how, how can we be better partners with the community, how can we be better partners with the airport, and think about what should we be advocating for in the C N R. I would love just some additional guidance on it. And so with that and the other, with the Greenway Trail, the fact that we are working really significantly with people from, who are experiencing homelessness in the community, I, I know we're not a county, but I feel like there are enough elements within our city that it may justify a, an F T E that focuses in on environmental and public health or environmental health and justice. We have a very diverse community. We have areas that are more impacted by issues like lead in, you know, older pipes or in older homes. And it would just be helpful to have somebody provide some additional guidance, research, advocacy for the city. So I'm throwing that out there. So, yeah.
I saw you have Sammy Zaran is his name from CSU, his contact?
So that was, so I included a contact for an academic researcher that.
Well, that's the one that the citizens keep wanting us to listen to.
I asked the community about, you know, so I asked the, one of our residents for more information about this specific person because, yes, we had somebody come in and present, but I think they also lived in the neighborhood. And I was kind of hoping for something that, additional point of information that was objective. And so I asked for his contact information, and I did share that with everybody because that was in the email along with the flyer. And so I don't want to just leave it as, you know, we've heard from C D P H E, but there may be some additional education that we would benefit from. And I feel like having a more objective source for that information would be helpful. So that, that was included, yes. But what I'm saying is more specific to our staff as a whole as we're looking at budget for twenty-four, I'm sorry, for twenty-five over the next year. I think that might be a good add to our community because we continue to just have these types of questions and thinking environmental justice is not going away. So, that's what you want.
I was going to say that would be a good conversation for strategic planning, and I would welcome discussing that. I mean, if, if nothing else but like a, almost a navigator or a point of contact in the city who specializes in that. So I'd be interested in at least discussing it.
Yeah, I think it's provocative in a good way. It's a great idea because of all these issues, and it's, it will be localized and independent, right? So rather than just a simpler connector to the state or to the federal, I think we need an independent expert on staff. So it's a great idea.
City Manager?
Just as a reminder, we do have both health departments coming in to speak to us on May twentieth. And might be a good conversation to have with them and to see what resources either of the counties could provide to us without having to, you know, do a supplemental budget appropriation to hire a new employee that frankly, you're not going to have on staff until mid-year at the best. And so maybe that, that would be a good opportunity to have that conversation. So May twentieth, just as a reminder.
I think asking questions would be helpful, but I would certainly want a broader discussion about what that kind of role could help, how that kind of role can help us on a broader level, not just the public health side of it, but I think we do have and will have just continued concerns in the city outside of just, you know, the typical public health role our counties do because they're clearly not doing it now.
Anything else? Okay, we've got three minutes, and I've got some stuff to get over. Went to the dog park meeting, two forty Union is always wonderful with Ralston House, Jeffco meeting has been talked about. And then I got tons of emails, didn't send them, when I just sent the thank you, I did not send them to everybody because all but four of them for the Greenway Trail was from either out of state or not within the city of Westminster. I only had four that were within the city of Westminster. Today, I attended a meeting that has to do with our transit, the passenger rail. Um, today I attended a meeting that has to do with our transit, um, the passenger rail. And we had John Putnam from C dot that was there. He's in charge of transit and rail. He's um working with the Front Range Passenger Rail. He talked about the I I A J, which is um where they're gonna get some money from. Emily is their legislative person from C dot. She was there. Lisa Kaufman and Senator um Feinberg were there. Um, they're talking about the train going from Pueblo to Fort Collins and it has to go to Fort Collins to become a commuter um rail and or passenger rail. And um they're looking at the Front Range along with uh the Northwest Rail. They talked about um the Northwest Rail merger with the Front Range Rail. Um, commuter rail has no dollars um for passenger rail if it goes to Fort Collins. That's the reason why they added Fort Collins. Um, there's no fiscal note right now in the draft that we looked at. Um, they know it's gonna cost around fifty million dollars a year um uh that they have in the bill. Um, stations, um, we probably won't have one. And um Longmont and Boulder have been um touched. They talked and teased a little bit today that, well, maybe there might be two other stops. But um some of the folks from Northwest, um mayors and commissioners talked to me offline and said, has your staff told you you're not getting a stop? And I'm sure that's because we have the B line down in historic Westminster, which I sent you all the numbers today. Um, so here's my dilemma. Um, is there, it probably depends on if C dot takes over R T D. Um, if that happens, in my gut says we'll lose um our station because it doesn't make economical sense right now. Um, if C if R T D stays, um, what can we do to get a station at least to the downtown? Um, because not, we have since the two thousand and four vote, this city has been built around those three transit-oriented developments. And they may just go up in smoke. Um, so it's very discern- discerning to me. Boulder will have both the Flatiron Flyer that goes from Boulder, stays in the bus lane and go straight to Denver. Then they'll have the train where they can get on and they go straight into Denver, um where the rest of the buses and whatnot go in and out serving each of the cities. So um I was not a happy camper listening to there. I kept my mouth shut for the meeting. Um, but after the meeting when people contacted me, I let my steam off. Um, they know that um I think we have to fight. Um, we have done, we have spent millions of dollars, millions of what we were promised and told and our people are paying into this. And I have no idea if if this another new whole thing comes in, they're gonna have to have a vote of the people. So you're gonna be paying that. Plus, we're not getting rid of the R T D tax, so you're paying that. And what do we have to show for it? Broomfield's even in a worse situation. Louisville, um, i- is just a real slap in the face. So anyway, um, that you're gonna need a twenty percent match for that I I A G J money. Um.
That's what I talked about, that the car rental is supposed to be the twenty percent.
Um, so those are my irate notes from that meeting. And I know we gotta get into our other meetings, but I just wanted to make um staff um aware, this is draft, but it's gonna become a bill this week. So we need to get on it and um figure out what this means for Westminster because I think it's critical.
Yeah.
Who's the sponsor name?
Feinberg and. Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council Meeting of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition to for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat. Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protam Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Um, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, Counselor Demont.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask that we make a motion to um excuse Counselor Haat from tonight's meeting since she's at N L C.
Do I have a second? Mayor Protam, second. It's been moved and seconded to um excuse Mayor Haat this evening. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion or opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to minutes of February twenty-sixth, two uh two thousand twenty-four. Mayor, uh Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting as presented.
Mayor Protam.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion or changes to those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be back and forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when that public hearing is called. Tonight, there is no public hearing on uh the supplemental appropriation. Uh, that is not.
I'm sorry, that's just a typo or an error.
There is no public hearing tonight, so come um during the public comment. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we have received eight emails by the deadline, which have been posted to the online packet, agenda packet, and forwarded directly to city council. And there are seven voicemails, which will be played back after our live speakers have concluded their remarks. City clerk, would you please call our first speaker?
The first speaker is David Wood. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Um, I am going to uh speak in some sense as a minority report. I know that I will be in the minority from scoping out the audience. Um, let me start my timer. My name is David Wood. I'm a retired physics professor from the School of Mines. I live in Candellas and I maintain a nonprofit, strictly science-based website about rocky flats. I'm speaking out of a sense of professional obligation uh about rocky flats. You will be hearing shortly from a variety of anti-nuclear groups and individuals claiming to protect public health. Radiation health is not rocket science, but it does require expertise in physical sciences, epidemiology and math, none of which uh these groups possess. They can tell you nothing about radiation dose since I know nothing about it. Yet this dose is the only predictor and quantity that determines the health impacts of exposure to ionizing radiation. As of twenty twenty-three, according to the International Commission on Radiological Protection, which sets the standards used universally around the world, it is now possible to predict cancer rates a priori from the exposure to to radiation for, for example, plutonium workers in plutonium plants around the world. Plutonium in rocky flat soil is a trace contaminant. It accounts for about point eight percent of total soil radioactivity. This is according to measurements both by the D O E uh before the cleanup was was completed and from a whole flurry of measurements that you know about from two thousand nineteen associated with Jefferson Parkway, fish and wildlife sampling and measurements by Dr. Michael Ketterer about small particles on the eastern boundary of rocky flats. Um, again, rocky uh plutonium accounts for about point eight percent of total soil radioactivity. It is very similar to natural radioisotopes, but emits far fewer of the gamma rays which cause whole-body doses. It is only der- dangerous if swallowed or inhaled because of the short range of alpha particles. Note that ninety-nine point four percent of the alpha particle radiation dose around rocky flats comes from natural radioisotopes. Um, from soil sampling in twenty nineteen, I used the largest measured soil level of plutonium and the largest contribution from Ketterer's measurements of hot particles to compute the radiation doses on the east side of the refuge, very close to the planned Greenway overpass. Uh, this was assuming exposure twenty-four seven for one year. These are about four microsieverts per year, which means nothing until I tell you that the background radiation around rocky flats contributes about three hundred times more to the yearly dose. Including local radon and medical imaging dose estimates, the total yearly dose is about thirty-two hundred times larger than that from plutonium. About ninety-eight percent of the excess risk of cancer is from gamma rays, which plutonium does not emit. Uh, the excess cancer risk due to plutonium inhalation is about one in two hundred and twenty million. Uh, the excess ca- background, yeah, so I should remind you that, or I'll tell you that the epidemic epidemiological measurements of cancer rates associated with radiation exposure are just barely capable of measuring the effects of uh background radiation when you examine large numbers of people over lo- long periods. Um, the council can insulate itself from imagined liability for a decision by getting very clear science input. Uh, I would be happy to give additional information or careful presentations to the city council if asked, but the C D P H E and uh the Department of Energy via the Legacy Management Program can also give you reliable information. Uh, about seventy percent of the response of the two hundred and fifty-six respondents to a Jefferson County survey about the Rocky Mountain Greenway favored completion. I urge you to reject fearmongering and acknowledge this strong support. Uh, for those who are interested, the the website I mentioned is called rockyflatsneighbors.org. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deborah Austin. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Deborah Austin. I live here in Westminster and I represent a new group formed in January twenty twenty-four, the Westy Dog Park Guardians. Our members have conducted some research and we're presenting our results to the Honorable Mayor, the City Council, the City Manager, and the Director of Parks. So you should be receiving our memo packet. We're our uh, we, tonight we're summarizing that research that describes community feedback from the Parks Department surveys, concerns about the environmental conditions report, how Coloradans and the citizens of Denver metro area love their dogs and love to recreate with their dogs, how dogs serve human beings in a unique and powerful way, including lowering our stress hormones, our blood pressure and our heart rates. Given that the Westminster Hills Dog Park is only six point four percent of the six thousand six hundred acres of parks in open space in Westminster, dog lovers might be an underserved community. The survey this last month from the Parks Department revealed that eighty-eighty-nine point eight percent of respondents support making no changes to the Westminster Hills Dog Park. While generally, lands acquired with open space funds are to be preserved and managed in a natural condition, the city council may determine that a property originally acquired for open space purposes may be better utilized for another public purpose, including an active park. For over two decades, the Parks Department has promoted, marketed, developed and managed the use of at least two recreational activities at the Westminster Hills Dog Park that are not listed as passive activities. That is off-leash dog use and cycling use. My colleagues will speak in more detail about the community feedback and the use and management of the Westminster Hills Dog Park. But tonight, we are asking the city council to retain the current four hundred and twenty-acre off-leash dog park that has existed since two thousand and at its current size since two thousand nine to officially redesignate it, the Westminster Hills Dog Park, as a City of Westminster Dog Park, to comply with the municipal code and to acknowledge the area is intended for active use by dog owners and cyclists and to consider a collaboration with the Westy Dog Park Guardians to improve conditions at Westminster Hills and address concerns raised by the Westminster Parks Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Stoud, Stod. Sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, I have a handout also that you've got, okay. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Cindy Stoud, a member of the Westy Dog Park Guard- Guardians. Although you've already received a packet detailing our concerns about the Dog Park, I'm here to speak about survey results. I'll try to make this as painless as possible, but it's important to review some of the data so there is consistent information to address a request I will give you at the end of my comments. Now let's look at your handout, please. Survey number one, the visitor survey done last summer, included questions about potential ongoing park management. The question regarding decreasing the size of the off-leash dog area was met with seventy percent disapproval, which is combining the extremely dissatisfied and the dissatisfied answers, seventeen percent approval, combining supportive and extremely supportive, and then thirteen percent with no opinion. P R L then opened survey number two in January titled Community Feedback. This was formatted as a simple tell us your opinions about the Dog Park. Eight hundred and eighty-three written responses are posted on the P R L web page. These responses were discussed at the public meeting held last Wednesday. P R L Director Herrera Michler stated that the responses indicated four community-identified options. Immediate comments from the audience asked for percentage percentages represented in each option. The director specifically stated that forty-seven percent, almost half, expressed support keeping the existing area off-leash. Asked about the other options, he responded, quote, "I don't know those percentages," unquote. In order to verify the results, four members of our group categorized all eight hundred and eighty-three uh responses to determine those percentages. The results are listed on the bottom of the first page of your handout. Option one, no change to the size of the. Option one, no change to the size of the off-leash area is 89.8%. Option two, off-leash area larger than 33 acres but smaller than 400 acres is 2.7%. Option three, conditions assessment recommendation of reducing off-leash area to 33 acres is 2.8%. And option four, eliminate off-leash at Westminster Hills open space and create more off-leash dog parks throughout the city is 2.5%. There was 2.2% of not applicable to any of those categories. This leads us to the city's development of the third survey, now open through March 20th. It's titled "Whose Area Management Plan Options?" That's on the second page of your handout. The options on this survey mirror the four options discussed at the meeting last week. I'd like to quickly touch on facts surrounding each of these options. Option one, as already indicated on both prior surveys, this has overwhelming support in the community. Option two, the director said there were quite a few respondents that offered what he called a "compromised position." In fact, only 2.7% of responses mentioned this position. Option three, the language chosen for option three, "conditions assessment," has not been used anywhere prior to this specific survey. Both the ERO report and PRL messaging refer to a "condition report." The term "conditions assessment" is mislabeled and confusing to potential respondents by not clearly stating it as PRL's original recommendation. Option four, adding option four is a common sales strategy designed to lessen the severity of option three and bolster false support for PRL's plan, where there is actually very little support. In conclusion, community support for keeping the off-leash area the current size has increased from 70% on survey number one to almost 90% on survey number two. That combined with the disproportionately low responses in the remaining categories leads us to the following request. We formally request city council direct staff to pull down survey number three. Its design, language, and data misrepresentation of survey number two's results is manipulated to gain support for options clearly not supported by this community. You have all the information you need. You don't need another survey.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dale Pugh. I also would like to remind the speakers that the podium does move up and down if you need to adjust the height. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and I'm thrilled to be here. As a former city attorney in Broomfield, I had the opportunity to write a lot of ordinances. But now that I'm a proud citizen of Westminster, I got to read your municipal code, as have all of the members of our Westminster Dog Park Guardian group. And what they'll remind you of is that you have great ordinances too. You have Section 1353A. It says, "We can have an open space," and you did that. It says that it's generally used for passive activities. However, 1353B said that the city manager can designate part of that property for other activities, and that's exactly what the city manager did way back in 2000. He added cycling and an off-leash dog park. So good on him. For the last 23 years, Westminster has marketed the Westminster Dog Park off-leash and brought in lots of people to utilize that park for the many reasons that I don't need to tell you, as far as dog owners and exercise and well-being and all of that. So after 23 years, you've kind of set the, set, set yourself up for having a off-leash dog park, and some legal person, not myself, of course, but some legal person might suggest that you shouldn't, that you've waived the opportunity to change that after 23 years. What I will say, however, is that another wonderful ordinance you have is 1354A, and it says that this city council can designate a portion of that open space as an active park. You've already got an active park. You've already marketed it for 23 years to people in Broomfield, and if any of you were, and I know Councilman Azell was there, and I mispronounced your name because I can't read it, I'm sorry, sir, but you, you heard people from outside of Westminster say that they come to the dog park frequently, and while they're there, they spend money in Westminster. So another good example of the economic benefits of marketing, which you have done, of an off-leash dog park. So, as you've heard, you got about 90, you could suggest that there's 90% of Westminster citizens who want an off-leash dog park. Taking that away doesn't sound like a good public policy, nor a good public political policy either, but you can certainly gain the support and, and popularity of your constituents if you in fact make it an active dog park. And guess what? The Westminster Dog Park Guardians are ready, able, and extremely willing to help you out in that effort. We have a core group of about 20, and we just started a newsletter online and have 260 people who signed up almost immediately to get our newsletter. So our position is extremely popular, and I would suggest that there is absolutely no reason to change the dog park, and there's every reason to redesignate it as an active park called the Westminster Dog Park, and let us all enjoy that. And we'll be right beside you all the way to help in any way we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Brown. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dave Brown, and I am a--
You can raise that if you need to. Oh, no. No, no, no. There's a button on the lower right corner. There you go.
Apologies for demolishing. I am a contractor. I'm used to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for having me. I have joined everyone here as a, as a city resident, purchased three of the new town homes down on Harlan, adjacent to the Westminster Town Center, and it's lovely, and I really enjoy living here, so thank you for all the work that you all have done. The reason I'm here tonight is because we're super concerned about some of the commercial businesses that are operating adjacent to Harlan and the Town Center, which is kind of fancy. I saw the model out here, and it's pretty cool. But one thing that we have concerns about, and I'm speaking just for myself as an owner of three, my wife and I, but we have a townhome HOA with, you know, 40-some units, and there's another couple hundred going in behind us right now. The concerns that we have specifically are regarding the sustainability recycling center that's going in adjacent to Harlan and the Town Center. We're concerned about the, the noise, the hours. I know that the, the facility will be going in. I doubt that I will be able to stop it. So we have a couple suggestions that would love to suggest a privacy wall on the tree line. I've had an opportunity to speak with the city manager, and thank you very much for your time and your staff, but as far as mitigating factors, the Saturday hours in particular will affect our community in a very negative fashion. Not to brag, but I spent $2 million, so I put my money where my mouth is, buying three of these townhomes, and my income is directly affected, as are many others, by, you know, tenants that live in the units, and if they don't want to rent them, we'll have a problem. Specifically, the privacy fence is something I'd like to suggest. We've discussed it with the city manager. Another item is specifically routing the traffic flow instead of having the cars line up on Harlan going into the complex, and it's an industrial complex, it ain't pretty already. Basically have the cars line up in the alley inside that complex and come out one at a time on Harlan. That will cause much less safety hazard, traffic backup, and just unsightly and smelly exhaust. Our, the residents of Harlan all have our sundex directly where the cars will sit. So the, the traffic flow issue seems like a very simple matter to have the tail of traffic and maybe four or five, maybe even seven, nine cars an hour go through. I would also submit that having Saturday hours less than nine to three, that's a request. It's all we can do, but nine to three on a Saturday, that's all the weekend a lot of people get, and I would love to, we would love to see, my wife and I would love to see that curtailed. I don't, even if it's an hour, any curtailment of that on a Saturday would be wonderful. The, where am I at? 146. The final point I'll make on the recycling sustainability center is I'll probably use it. I'm not opposed to the idea. It's just, let's make it sort of work with the community, and, and I can't show you the photos, I didn't get them to you in time, but my picture window is about maybe 45, 50 yards from where that, you know, is going to be happening, so we're very concerned. The final, or the other thing we wanted to mention is on 9051 Harlan Street, directly south of the tree line, there is an event center called Legacy Event Center that has had a permit since 2016. It is currently operating in a capacity in the back of the complex where they've sort of been under the radar a little bit. They just took over the entire front, and they're advertising 700 people capacity, and they have a publicly accessible ad saying they will be open till 5:00 a.m. I've been informed by the city manager, in a very friendly way, professionally as well, that they have every right to do that because they operate under a commercial license and permit. However, in my very humble opinion, they are operating what I would consider an illegal nightclub, and I'd like to read into the record in my 27 seconds the ordinance that I'd like the police to please enforce. It's Westminster Code 11-4-6J. The City of Westminster does not have a noise ordinance, but that particular code, environmental requirements, does provide that dust, fumes, odors, smoke, vapor, noise, lights, and vibrations shall create no adverse off-site impacts in all districts. I know you know, you probably wrote the law, but I'm just saying, or the ordinance, but this is something that we would like to work with the police department to enforce it. When we call, we'd like to present that for enforcement. Thank you so much. I have eight seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alicia Case. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name is Alicia Casey. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I had submitted a comment. I didn't see it in the agenda, so I'm just going to read it just in the case that you guys did not receive it. So I submit this public comment to ask that the Westminster City Council vote to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway and the federal land access grant program for the, and to deny the use of Westminster land along Indiana Street for Rocky Mountain Greenway use. With sweeping views and quiet solace, the land at Rocky Flats offers. It's easy to forget and dismiss what happened there. The manufacturing plant that was built there machined the most essential part of the nuclear bomb, the plutonium core, into shape at the center of this bomb, using and creating tons of nuclear waste and some of the worst nuclear accidents in our nation's history. Unfortunately, the weapons-grade plutonium that was left there does not forget, such as we do with these sweeping views, and will continue to burn on into the very distant future with a half-life of 24,000 years. It's not just going to evaporate or go away. It's only been 50 years since it was deposited there and left for our citizens and our communities to both endure and guard. No one is denying that the plutonium is on the ground there, just west of here, not the EPA, not the Department of Energy, not the Colorado Department of Health. In the comments that I submitted, the Colorado Department of Health gave a presentation in 2015 which outlined a field north of the Candellas development that had 38 test spots. Each of those test spots came back positive for levels of plutonium. Some of those levels were well higher above any of the remediation that was allowed for the off-site areas. So it's out there, and it's just going to continue to stay there, and it's up to us to protect our communities, protect our health, and stay out of the area. So what I'd like to do is ask that you guys do not encourage the development of trails in and onto the land. At the center of that site is a active nuclear waste superfund site that has not been turned over, and I don't, you know, we do this just to educate because, you know, the turnover in city council is that a lot of people forget that that's what happened out there. So there is a active nuclear waste site at the center of that site. It's covered by six feet of soil, and the other graphic that I submitted is the cleanup standard. There's different levels of allowable, levels of plutonium contamination in that soil. So I think it's important that we remind everyone that there's an active nuclear waste site at the center of the site, and we don't want to encourage trails in and around the area where families could be exposed. I will pass these comments to you, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Give it over to-- The next speaker is Deborah Segaloff. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Segaloff. By way of introduction, I have a PhD in biochemistry, and I was a biomedical research scientist for nearly 40 years. Prior to my recent retirement, I was a professor in the Department of Molecular Physiology and Biophysics and a member of the Holden Comprehensive Cancer Center at the University of Iowa Carver College of Medicine. Following federal and state safety guidelines, I worked with radioactive compounds for all of my scientific career, and therefore I can't be accused of being phobic of radioactivity. In that context, once moving to Colorado and becoming better educated regarding Rocky Flats, I became involved with PSR Colorado, where I'm currently on the Board of Directors, and I've been outspoken regarding the ongoing dangers to public health that the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge poses. The buffer zone surrounding the Rocky Flats plant that produced plutonium triggers for nuclear weapons was documented to be highly contaminated with plutonium and other toxic substances. Nonetheless, by converting the buffer zone into a wildlife refuge, the government was not required to do any cleanup whatsoever of that land. The CDPE has defined plutonium levels of 50 picograms per gram soil as safe to recreate on the refuge. This threshold was based on mathematical modeling that permitted an acceptable number of cancer deaths due to exposure. Note that this threshold is 500 to 5,000-fold higher than background plutonium levels in surface soil resulting from the fallout of atmospheric testing of atomic weapons. Furthermore, it takes about 24,000 years until a given particle of plutonium has lost half of its radioactivity. Therefore, the soil on the refuge remains contaminated essentially forever. When outside of the body, the alpha radiation emitted by plutonium poses no health risks because it can't pass through the skin. However, if soil dust containing plutonium is inhaled, ingested, or taken up by a cut in the skin, it remains lodged in one's body for the person's lifetime, continuously emitting radiation that bombards surrounding cells. This can cause DNA damage and therefore significantly increase the person's risk of developing cancer years later. Plutonium cannot be easily detected. For example, you can't simply scan the ground with a Geiger counter. Instead, soil samples must be taken, and then complex methods involving highly specialized equipment must be employed. In 2019-- well as the Rocky Mountain Greenway. The Rocky Mountain Greenway project involves the building of a trail in the most heavily contaminated region of the refuge. Building the overpass above Indiana Avenue to connect it with open space in Westminster would all but guarantee the transfer of plutonium far from the refuge. Upon completion of all the Greenway trails, individuals could use the trail in the most heavily contaminated eastern region of the refuge, and then continue north to the Rocky Mountain National Park, transporting plutonium into one of the most heavily visited parks in our national park system. Ultimately, the Greenway trails would not only put those using them at risk, but would also allow plutonium to be tracked far outside the refuge, thereby putting many other individuals, including visitors to the Rocky Mountain National Park, at risk. Therefore, while you were elected by the citizens of Westminster, please keep in mind that your actions regarding the Greenway impact those living in Westminster, as well as men, women, and children far beyond the borders of Westminster. I, as well as PSR Colorado, urge you to place public safety above all else and halt construction of the overpass above Indiana Avenue and withdraw from the Greenway Trail Project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Lipsky. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and honorable counselors, staff, and visitors. My name is John Lipsky. I'm a retired FBI agent. I served two search warrants at Rocky Flats in June of nineteen eighty-nine, and it was subsequently closed and never to make thermonuclear weapons any longer. Thanks to Counselor Ezziati on tonight's pre and post study group meeting, item three C is the consideration of the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And you've already heard quite a bit, I'd just like to add that your jurisdiction with the Rocky Mountain Greenway is that Rocky Flats was actually three operable units of a superfund site. We all know about the donut in the hole, or the Rocky Flat Site itself, in the middle of the refuge is an ongoing superfund site. The refuge was operable unit two, and portions of Westminster, that was annexed in nineteen ninety, along the Indiana Street corridor, was also in the superfund site of operable unit three. I sent, or I emailed my public comments, I think they're compelling, and I hope they're given their due consideration. I'd just like to point out that Federal Highway Administration is building a pedestrian bridge across Indiana Street from the most polluted or plutonium-contaminated area of Westminster on the east side of Indiana to the most plutonium-contaminated area within the refuge. And on the refuge, it's called the windblown area. On the Westminster side, it's the individual hazardous substance site one ninety-nine. And that particular IHSS one ninety-nine realized more plutonium than any other location, and I'm talking about an expansive area. OU three is not only the eastern side of Indiana, but it's also south of the refuge where Candalis is, some twenty thousand plus acres. Now, the lands along with the refuge on the Westminster side were delisted by EPA in two thousand and seven. But the point of it is, the soil disturbance, the digging below three feet, the standard changes from fifty pico curries per gram at below three feet is a thousand to seven thousand, and below six feet it's unlimited. And I don't know how deep FHWA is going to dig, but I do have concerns about the contaminants being entrained into the air, not only for the workers, but also for the residents and anyone that passes by. And I thank you for your attention to this, and I'm happy to be in wonderful Westminster, I truly am. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexandria Yersi. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I, along with my neighbor Dave, have moved into the townhomes at Harlan, and we've really enjoyed the area being close to the Alamo, and we, it's been a rough couple weeks here hearing about the surprise of the recycling center. And I also wanted to reiterate when he was speaking about the Legacy Event Center. We have other neighbors, so it sits right across the street from us at nine zero five one Harlan, at the Harlan Crossing. And multiple times last year, the, my neighbors have called to complain that there's been noise just with the three hundred people of the smaller space for that facility. So at one to two AM, my neighbors have called the police to report, you know, the loudest mufflers and the loudest dispersion when the facility has been closed. And then we see the announcement that now they're advertising that they're, that because the, they've expanded all the way to the glass, there's all glass around the building, it doesn't seem that they are putting in any type of soundproofing, it's just concrete and glass, and now they're advertising that they will more than double their capacity to seven hundred people, open till five AM, and bring your own alcohol. Nothing good happens after midnight, but we've seen it, we've seen that firsthand with my neighbors. Cocopelli, there was a shooting, and my neighbors even behind me heard it, and that happened at ten PM, and there was a fatality. Dave has a toddler, my other friends, my other neighbors have a newborn, sorry. It's just a little unnerving being, being right there. I'm a Boy Scout mom from New Jersey, and I've worked closely with my police in Mama, New Jersey, and I'm asking, how do we work together, closer with the police, to possibly set up DWI checkpoints? Because, sorry. This is just really important, and it's very scary. And we wouldn't be able to walk this gorgeous downtown. You guys have invested a lot of time, I thank you so much for all the parks, the ten million you're gonna be investing, Mark, thank you for your time. It's just really scary, and just, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, so, I just thank you for your advice, and thank you for that, at least we have that one environmental requirement that we can keep holding up to protect us about, to prove that it does provide that dust, fumes, odors, smoke, vapor, noise, lights, and vibrations shall create no adverse off-site impact to all districts. The bottom line is we give you a hundred thousand dollars in yearly taxes just from the, our phase one of our thirty-four townhomes, and we need to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Horn. Welcome.
All right. Hello, my name is Michael Horn, and I and several other of us live in the Lexington neighborhood in the northern part of Westminster. And we are all here to talk about the trail system that's actually around and in our neighborhood, and how we, you know, we can hopefully get some help from Westminster to help with that trail system. So, as part of that trail system, and part of the reason why I passed out, or had these documents passed out, is as you can see, these are documents from the City of Westminster. And in these documents, they show the trail system that Westminster is claiming as their own. And that includes a piece of the trail system, which is about a tenth of a mile, maybe a little bit more in length, that is on the eastern section of the Lexington neighborhood. And that particular piece of the trail system is actually composed of asphalt currently. That was what was put in when the trail was originally constructed during the time that the whole community was originally put together. Now, that asphalt is coming to the point where it needs to be replaced, and currently, that asphalt is owned by the community of Lexington. And to replace that asphalt is somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, we have about a hundred and twenty-six, not about, we have a hundred and twenty-six homes in our neighborhood, which it comes out to about a thousand dollars per home to replace that, you know, about a tenth of a mile of asphalt. Now, if you look at the full Westminster trail system, that full Westminster trail system is about a hundred and twenty miles of trails, and that, of course, is maintained by the City of Westminster, which means that that entire trail system, the cost of maintenance, et cetera, is split amongst the forty-six thousand or forty-seven thousand houses, I'm not sure how many exactly are homes are in our neighborhood or in our city, which, of course, you know, we are contributing to that maintenance as part of Lexington. But it's also definitely not a thousand dollars per house to replace a tenth of a mile of asphalt. Now, the other thing I want to point out about our neighborhood is, you know, in contrast to almost every other neighborhood in Westminster, we do not have a city-maintained sidewalk system in our neighborhood. We have no sidewalks in our neighborhood. And I, you know, I for one, I have two, two boys, and they, you know, they go, like to go around, and they, they're old enough that they can go around the neighborhood and play with the other neighborhood kids. But for them to get from my house to, you know, one of the neighbor's houses where, to play with the, the other kids, they have to walk on the street. Now, I'm not asking you to put sidewalks in by any means here, but I do want to point out that, you know, we are already paying for, you know, for the entire trail system, we're contributing our fair share, and then we're contributing more than our fair share, you know, in my opinion, for the trail system that is around our neighborhood. Now, the one, one final point I did want to bring up is the official development plan, which was originally set up for Lexington. It was set up for our neighborhood to be a horse neighborhood. Now, I've never seen any horses in our neighborhood, but I've only, also only lived there for about four years. But the, the important part of that is that the, you know, because it was designated as a horse neighborhood, then the trail system is, you know, set up according to that document, that this would be a, a trail system for pedestrian usage or for horse usage, which if we have to replace that, you know, about tenth of a mile of trail ourselves, we may end up being forced to replace that piece of asphalt with dirt just due to the cost that's involved there, and that would, would be allowed by the, at least my understanding would be allowed by the official development plan. So, like I say, there'll be others that are here from the neighborhood as well that'll be discussing this, and definitely would appreciate your consideration, so thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Isabel Vigil. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your time, and thank you for having us. I just want to add to what my neighbor shared in that we live in Lexington, we don't have sidewalks, and our taxes pay to maintain those in the City of Westminster. And I also would like to address the trail that we would like taken over. We're not asking for sidewalks, we just want, because we have, we do pay an overage in our taxes for things we don't use, we don't take advantage of, we would like help with that trail. And I'm not, as, I mean, I just want to add that we, myself, we are third-generation Westminster residents. My husband and his six siblings graduated from Random High School, my, all my in-laws still live in Westminster. They all have sidewalks. When my kids go to their cousin's house, when they went to their cousin's houses or my in-laws' houses, they met the neighbors, they met friends, they played on the sidewalks. It did, it did help them, and it does make, you know, it does build a community. We don't have that, we have to work much harder in our community to do that with the kids, and we're willing to do that. We have been there so long, you know, the family, my kids themselves have volunteered at the Front Range Community College Library for the summer reading program, they both did the Police Academy, which they loved, loved the dogs, great thing. My daughter was the, I think she was the nineteen ninety-nine Westminster Citizen of the Year. I've taught my kids to volunteer, so we give back, we're not just asking, and that's true of a lot of my neighbors, we do give back, we do volunteer, we give our time to this, to this, to this city. I love Westminster, we've been here forever. So we're just asking that you please consider this. Help us take over that trail system, everybody uses it. With the development of Huntington Trails and the, I don't remember the development behind us, it is constantly in use by kids, high school kids mostly, walking to and from high school. I mean, everyone in the other development, like going where Chick-fil-A is and whatnot, all of those retail spaces, lots of folks walks there. I don't know what's gonna go in, I don't, you know, directly across Lexington, but that will only further add to traffic and more use of that space. People, we have lots of dog lovers here today, they are asking, and they know, we, Westminster's full of them, there are always people walking their dogs on those trails. It gets lots of use. So please, consider this, and consider the people that live there and what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marvin Canstier Steiner. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Marvin Canstier Steiner, I've been a resident of Lexington for thirty years, I'm one of the oldest, my wife and I are one of the oldest residents there, there's like two or three of us that, that have been there about the same amount of period of time. And when we moved out there thirty years ago and built our house, we had, here on was a two-lane road, we had a dairy farm across the street, a hundred and thirty-sixth interchange didn't exist, a hundred and forty-fourth didn't have any in or out of, or going onto I-25. It was, we're in a no man's land. We literally, when City of Westminster annexed that land out there, we had nothing else around us, we had wheat fields, and there was nothing there. And so, coming forward thirty years from now, you know, the area's developed immensely, we got subdivisions all the way around us, and we've got shopping centers and so on, and it's, it's quite, you know, convenient, and it's very nice that we have all that. When we were there thirty years ago, and we've walked dogs our whole thirty years of being there, and, and walked our path, and the only people on that path, because it was the only way you, that was around that path, was our neighbors. Today, it's an entirely different thing. With all the, with the, with all the developments around us, and the Lexington, or the Westminster Trail, the way it's, way it's shown, we see a lot of activity. And we walk, walk their dogs, and we see our neighbors, but we also see numerous people, bicycles, and other people walking in the neighborhoods. And it's all convenient, but what has happened, it's obviously created a lot of liability for our neighborhood, for that small trail area. And actually, that trail is longer than that, we put in, we talked about the one-tenth of a section, but there's another section that's nine tenths to the north, or goes around our north side, as part of the West, that you have marked as the Westminster Trail System also. And we spent over a hundred grand in concrete on that ten, fifteen years ago. It might be longer than that, I'm not even sure. But the point is, is that we've done a lot of that heavy lifting and replaced a lot of that, but we're... And so, um, coming forward thirty years from now, you know, the area's developed immensely. We got subdivisions all the way around us, and we've got shopping centers and so on. And it's, it's quite, you know, convenient, and it's very nice that we have all that. When we were there thirty years ago, and we've walked dogs our whole thirty years of being there, and, and walked our path, and the only people on that path, because it was the only way you, that was around that path, was our neighbors. Today, it's an entirely different thing. With all the, with the Lex, with all the developments around us, and the Lexington, or the Westminster Trail, the way it's, way it's shown, we see a lot of activity. And we walk, walk their dogs, and we see our neighbors, but we also see numerous people on bicycles and other people walking in the neighborhoods. And it's all convenient, but what has happened, it's obviously created a lot of liability for our neighborhood, for that small trail area. And actually, that trail is longer than that. We put in, we talked about the one-tenth of a section, but there's another section that's nine tenths to the north, or goes around our north side, as part of the West, that you have marked as Westminster Trail System also. And we spent over a hundred grand in concrete on that ten, fifteen years ago. It might be longer than that, I'm not even sure. But the point is, is that we've done a lot of that heavy lifting and, and replaced a lot of that. But we're, but right now, our liability for all the people that access that is, has greatly given us a lot more exposure, and the city obviously has a little bit less, a little more limited liability. And so, we're looking for, to, for you to take over, or, and the, the trail itself, nothing else but the trail, and help us with some of that building. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jason Lauer. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd be welcome too. Thanks for having us here. It was a bit of a repeat message, but I moved to Broomfield just about twenty years ago, and one of the first things I discovered was a, this great map of all these trail systems. And so, when my wife found Lexington neighborhood about five years ago, we couldn't wait to move in, and that was one of the reasons we chose to stay close in the area was because of these trail systems. We have two young kids. I've wanted to live further out of the city, she wanted to live in the city. One of the things she said was, "Well, I want sidewalks." So, that was one of the contentions of our last neighborhood, but it didn't have sidewalks either, and neither again does this one. Nevertheless, we have runners in my family, we have kids that want to play out on the street. The benefit of having the connectivity to the larger bike path is that I feel safer letting the kids take off, letting them roam around. It is this small section that is a potential hazard because of the older construction material. We made it a lot nicer and easier to maintain in the long run if it was redone in concrete. As you've heard, it is a small portion of only about a mile trail system that's already being accounted for in the larger city map for the trail system, which, when you combine with neighboring communities, neighboring towns, and their trail maps, it makes for a really nice method to get around town. You see more people taking to bikes and walking in general, and I think we'd like this area to become and remain a part of that. And so, we're just asking for a little bit of help in maintaining it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sharon Harrison.
Hi, I'm Sharon Harrison. I am on the Lexington HOA Board, and I've lived in Lexington for almost twenty years. And much like Marvin, I experienced a Lexington that was just a tiny neighborhood, which was wonderful, and we had our path, and that was wonderful. I know when I walk that path now, I see, you know, instead of seeing every person lives in Lexington, I see like maybe one out of every five, which I think is a great thing that our city planners did for us. It showed a lot of vision a long time ago to think about putting our city together in a way that it could be connected, and that could, people could really enjoy and walk for as many miles as they wanted. It was really visionary, and I appreciate that. Fourteen years ago, the HOA did pay over a hundred thousand dollars to do about eight tenths of a mile of the trail ourselves. More recently, we have this one tenth of a mile that is still the original asphalt, and it's degrading. We've had bids for that of over a hundred thousand dollars, and as you've heard, we have a hundred and twenty-six homes. It's really hard, you know, you guys all know about leadership because you all sit in that position. It's very hard to explain to a hundred and twenty-five of your neighbors why they need to pony up a thousand dollars apiece for something that is enjoyed by all of the citizens of our city. We have, you know, we've looked at options. We have a movement within our neighborhood that you heard about, that's based on the ODP, where people just want to tear it out and leave it dirt. I will have a huge battle to try and get this done with the money that we have in You know, I think that looking at the document that came from the city of Westminster itself this year, where you see that that trail system is advertised as part of your trail system, I know when you look electronically, it'll say it's a non-Westie trail, but the reality is, when you put information out, you advertise this, and that brings people in. Our community enjoys that, it's wonderful, it's great, but we also have the liability if somebody gets hurt there. And a city does not have that liability. We are looking at a situation where if somebody gets hurt out there, we are at risk, our hundred and twenty-six homes. Our HOA carries a million-dollar rider of insurance. It depends on the type of injury, whether or not that will be enough. That is an unfair thing to put onto a community. If we lived in a community of five or six hundred homes, the cost of doing this would probably be a lot more negligible, right? But the reality is, we don't, and the bigger concern is, as more and more people come through, we have a greater instance of somebody having an accident, and that is an unreasonable thing to ask a community to bear. We have no sidewalks. If somebody falls on a city sidewalk, they have limit, you have limited liability in what you can collect. We don't enjoy that. So, I am making a formal ask of the city council to come to a vote on our trail system. I am asking only for the trail. The trail itself sits in the ODP in different tracks. We're not asking you to take any tract, we're taking, asking you to take just the path itself. I know it's not legally defined that way right now, but, you know, it's really important that we look at this as a realistic thing moving forward. Broomfield took almost seven tenths of a mile from us in two thousand and six on the south side of that path, and they put in concrete, and they landscaped it, and it looks We put in the other eight tenths of a mile at just about that same time, and that's what cost us over a hundred thousand dollars. It's just very hard to explain to our community why we alone bear the cost and the liability of this when it really should be something that should be bore by the city. So, I'm asking you for a vote. I gave you some examples, like Track A is, there's concrete in that area, we've already done the hard work there for you, but we still have a detention pond there and drainage that we would need to maintain. Track B is very similar, that's where some of the asphalt is. Again, a huge detention pond, we would want to take, continue to maintain that for our community, that's part of our responsibility, but I really believe that the responsibility for the trail lies with the city and not with us. So, I'm asking the city council to bring that to a vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Larrond. Welcome.
Welcome, yeah, thank you for having me. I feel like I'm a little out of place here. I mean, we're talking about plutonium, and we're talking about child safety, and I'm going to talk about dog poop. My purpose is, is, is not funny. I'm talking about the dog situation at the Westminster Hills Dog Park, and I call it a dog park and not a open space. It's been a dog park since I've been here, it's been a dog park as long as I've been able to research since two thousand. And I would like to see the, the city of Westminster make sure that when someone in the name of the city of Westminster puts out information, that information is accurate, okay? And I think we've been flooded with some inaccurate information recently. Like a hundred and seventy-five tons of dog poop per year at the dog park. That just seems unbelievable. That, that's about a thousand pounds of dog poop per day, given two weeks off for the dogs that don't go there. And I like it to a situation, when I was a police officer and doing drug enforcement, I was sitting in my office, and an officer comes in, and he says, "Hey, boss," he says, "we just busted these guys, they had the forty pounds of marijuana." This is way back when, okay, as you can see by the gray hair. And I said, "Oh, geez, that's, that's great." We, we didn't worry about a, a joint or something like that, but forty pounds was significant, so we, I went and I said, "Well, I want to see what you got," because we like to look at the packaging, that would give us some indication of where the drugs may have come from. I go there, and I go to the property clerk and ask him where the forty pounds were. He points to a table, and on that table are four flower pots, each containing one marijuana plant about a foot tall. New York, we had what was called the aggregate law. You aggregated, you took the whole weight of whatever was with that, and you weighed it, and that's how you determined the charge. Well, we had about thirty-nine point nine pounds of dirt and about one-tenth of a pound of marijuana. And it seems to me that this figure of a hundred and seventy-five tons is, is not realistic. There is dog poop out there, I understand that. If he's measured it, if it was measured and we picked up a hundred and seventy-five tons, then I think the people that use the dog park have done a good job in removing the stuff. Either way, something's not right here. The other, the other issue is prior use, and I, my understanding that it's been a dog park since two thousand, off-leash dog park, to differentiate it from the others, and that the loose dogs are causing waste and damaging prop, damaging environmentally sensitive plants and displacing animals. Well, prior to two thousand, it was an off-leash cattle park, okay? There was cattle running loose there. Nothing's really changed, and I don't know how long that was a cattle park or a cattle range, but that was for some time. So, the dogs have not caused damage to the environmentally sensitive plants, and I care about them too. I mean, I'm not up here to, I'm not some guy that's, wants to bulldoze everything. But it's kind of disingenuous to, to, to come out and tell us that the poor purpose of saving this property is to save these plants and these animals, which weren't there before the dogs got there. And since the dogs have got there, we have the plants and we have the animals. So, that's not a problem. I'm not part of the Westie Guardians, I support what they do, this is strictly on my own. I guess what I would like to see is that the city council take a little closer look at the materials that are being presented to the public in the name of the city of Westminster, and that we have to rely on as fact when, in fact, it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Giselle Hersfeld.
Welcome. Good evening, members of the Westminster City Council. My name is Giselle Hersfeld, and I am here with the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm speaking as a community member who is deeply concerned about Westminster City Council's 2021 decision to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail, and specifically the construction of an overpass crossing the Indiana Street Corridor. I urge you to withdraw from the intergovernmental agreement and to not allow construction of an overpass across the Indiana Street Corridor. First, a little backstory. I grew up in Lewisville and Lafayette and lived less than twenty minutes northeast of Rocky Flats throughout my entire youth. My family was very politically engaged, often dragging me to city council meetings regarding local environmental issues as a child. However, my parents moved to the Colorado Front Range in the late nineteen nineties, so they were not living in the area during the height of public awareness around Rocky Flats. Therefore, even with parents who were very aware of local environmental issues, it was not until I was twenty-one years old that I heard the name Rocky Flats for the first time. And it was only after I met someone working at the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center that I learned that I had spent my whole life in the shadow of a highly contaminated former nuclear weapons facility. I was shocked to learn this, and the more I learned, the more shocked I became. I immediately went to all my friends who had also grown up in the area and asked them if they had heard about Rocky Flats, to which their answer was always, "No, what's that?" Always, when I ask people who have moved to this area from out of state whether they have heard about Rocky Flats, they've either never heard of it, or they only know it by name as a wildlife refuge. While I still occasionally meet people who were here in the seventies and eighties who vividly remember the Rocky Flats plant, I can tell you that by and large, young people and people moving here from out of the state do not know about Rocky Flats. The memory of the former nuclear weapons site and the environmental and ethical atrocities that occurred there risk being obscured in public memory, and projects like the Rocky Mountain Greenway only further serve to normalize this highly contaminated site as a safe place to recreate. It is anything but. Rocky Flats produced over seventy thousand plutonium pits for nuclear bombs between nineteen fifty-two and nineteen eighty-nine. In that time, there were two massive industrial fires that spread hot particles of plutonium across Rocky Flats and surrounding residential areas. Additionally, there were highly questionable practices of storage and disposal of contaminated radioactive material, including five thousand barrels of plutonium waste that corroded and leaked onto the ground in what is known as the 903 pad, or the piled cardboard box storage of toxic plutonium sludge known as pongcrete. The site was officially shut down in nineteen eighty-nine when an FBI raid found evidence of severe environmental violations. After the site was officially shut down, cleanup of the site was estimated by the Department of Energy to cost thirty-seven billion dollars and take seventy years, but what ended up happening was only a partial cleanup totaling seven point three billion dollars and ending in two thousand and five. The result of all of these cut corners and cleanup is that the Rocky Flats area is still highly contaminated with plutonium, americium, beryllium, uranium, and radioactive lead, among others. This is evidenced in the two thousand and six CAD-ROD study showing widespread contamination of several radionuclides, more, most predominantly plutonium and americium. In this study, contamination was shown to extend past the EPA-designated superfund area and into the wind-blown area on the southeast side, known as the most contaminated part of the site that's not the central operable unit, this wind-blown area where the Indiana Street overpass of the Rocky Mountain Greenway is, it is where the Indiana Street overpass of the Rocky Mountain Greenway is proposed to be built. Plutonium can remain radioactive for two hundred and fifty thousand years. Plutonium particles can be microscopic, but that does not make them less deadly. We are dealing with the most dangerous material known to man. I am particularly concerned about the widespread presence of tiny respirable particles of plutonium on the site. When a particle of plutonium enters one's body, particularly through inhalation or through an open wound, it is likely to remain in the body permanently and continuously bombard surrounding cells with radiation. At the cellular level, even a tiny particle of plutonium can wreak havoc. This radiation can lead to the development of cancer cells, which can lead to many forms of cancer. It can also cause immune deficiencies, birth defects, and many other health problems. These can all develop many years after exposure, but that timeline does not make the issue any less serious, it only makes it harder to establish direct causation. Every year, hundreds of thousands of people, hundreds or thousands of people recreate on Rocky Flats with no knowledge of what occurred there, or the contamination that they are exposing themselves or possibly their children to. The threat to public health, safety, and welfare from promoting recreation at Rocky Flats far exceeds any benefit that a new mountain biking trail could offer. Please withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway intergovernmental agreement and halt recreation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Hi, my name is Chris Allred from Longmont, and I'm returning here tonight to follow up regarding Rocky Flats. I urge you to please halt construction of the Indiana Street overpass and withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. I'm providing two studies for your review. The first is from Dr. Carl Johnson. He's a former executive director of Jefferson County Public Health. That study is from nineteen seventy-six. It is entitled "Plutonium Hazard in Respirable Dust on the Surface of" It is entitled "Plutonium Hazard in Respirable Dust on the Surface of Soil." The second study is from Dr. Ketterer, and this study is dated in two thousand and twenty. More than a dozen studies over the past forty-five years have shown consistent results. The wind-blown area downwind of Rocky Flats continues to have plutonium contamination. As you can see on that map, the same pattern of contamination continues here along Indiana The proposed Indiana Street overpass is right in the middle of this contaminated area. What would be Westminster's ongoing responsibility for maintenance of this overpass that's being constructed on contaminated land? What precautions are being taken to protect workers and downwind residents from airborne dispersal of contaminants? What is the long-term risk? These are the important questions to consider. Please see that this project is a way to further normalize recreation in a contaminated area. It also normalizes other kinds of construction in a contaminated, in a contaminated area. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this is the area that Dr. Carl Johnson said should never be developed. That's the nineteen seventy-six study. The first speaker mentioned something about fear mongering. This is a common attempt to discredit us. This is absolutely not fear mongering. This is called informed decision-making. There is a range of science on the subject of radiation health physics. I have provided you with two studies tonight for your consideration. Others might present you with science from the Department of Energy, but please be mindful that the DOE has a vested interest in protecting nuclear bomb production. Our interest is protecting public health. The Department of Energy is the industry that created the contamination. We ask that you have the courage to defend public health. Don't allow this pattern to go forward that puts our community at risk. This project has actually received significant opposition since its outset. A few precedents to note, the town of Superior rejected the project at its outset in two thousand and sixteen. Broomfield withdrew in two thousand and twenty. When the Westminster City Council passed the IGA in February of two thousand and twenty-one, there were no public comments. Later, in Boulder in Boulder County, the community was not allowed to speak at the public meeting. The city council and county commissioners were presented with a one-sided story to support the project. One of the reasons they claimed to support the project was a safety issue, to help people avoid traffic crossing the street into Rocky Flats. Please don't be confused by this argument. It is not logical to construct a passage into a contaminated area and claim it's on behalf of bikers' safety. It is a far greater long-term risk to public health to build more infrastructure through contaminated land. I'm a member of the Alliance for Nuclear Accountability, and we've heard stories from communities on the front lines of contaminated sites around the nation. Just tonight, speaking with members of the community here, I've heard more stories about the health impacts of Rocky Flats. Sometimes these stories remain hidden because people don't like to talk about them. So please consider the health of present and future generations who live here, families with children who may not know about the contamination at Rocky Flats. Westminster Public Schools is one of seven local school districts who have committed not to allow field trips at Rocky Flats. Please join our local school districts and neighboring governments and withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlene Wiley. Welcome.
Thank you. I hate it when somebody taller than me comes first. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I wrote you an email earlier this week and have asked that to be part of the packet and the public record for tonight's meeting. I have provided this information twice to you to ensure that all of you have the most accurate information I can provide on the situation at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport and its community noise roundtable. I've been appearing before this council for over six years on this matter, and I, tonight, I think it should be a top concern for you, although I think you've heard plenty of other things. The developments I outlined in my email lead me to deliver a warning to this council about the growing liabilities for Westminster and the future well-being of residents here. Since the beginning of the year, you've heard from many of us pleading with you to leave the noise roundtable and to reach out to other victim community, communities that share the onslaught of toxic air traffic from this facility. We've asked you to, one, understand the complex problem, two, insist on verifiable and reliable data to make decisions, three, truly consider community views, four, ensure transparency and appropriate process at council meetings, and five, ensure accurate presentation of community at the CNR and other meetings. The most important thing I can tell you tonight is that it seems likely that the CNR will die its own natural death, and that a vote to dissolve this body may occur at the next meeting. Agendas are rarely published in time to allow this council to have warning that that will happen. This gives you just a few weeks to develop data on the matter, include the community in discussions, and set a strategy for what comes next. While you may think the clock is ticking slowly for the implications of this dissolution to have major consequences for the city, I assure you that is not the case. It is likely that the dissolution of the CNR could result in each affected municipality taking its own course to protect its citizens. In the case of RMMA, Boulder County has suffered the most, taking on over eighty percent of its traffic. Both Boulder County and Superior have retained council and appear to be ready to use them to deal with the matter. That spells significant risk for this community. There is the most likely sacrifice zone for taking on RMMA traffic when it's prevented legally by Boulder County. There is nothing to stop Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport from pushing more traffic into Westminster, and to, that would have the effect of more and more impact on areas as a strategy to avoid parts of Boulder County where they may be legally prevented from RMMA traffic now extends as far as parts of Laramore County, over thirty miles from its runway. So expect to see traffic in Adams County and other parts of Westminster. As those flight patterns extend further into the city, you will see lots of people, like me, complaining about air traffic that hasn't been there before. It's just a natural consequence of lawsuits they've already lost to, and there's more coming. Please work with us to develop a strategy. It's important to help us all deal with what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Baraya. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Bill Baraya from Westminster, and I'd like to make some comments about the last CNR meeting that took place last week. I'm relating this to the discussion you all had from the lead person that came in to talk to you, and you had a lot of comments, and I don't believe you came to a consensus of what you should do, but I'd like to talk to you about trustee Sir Boo from Boulder's presentation that you were talking about. And after talking about this to several pilots, there are some concerning assumptions that his plan was relating to noise and flight paths. Please remember that ninety percent of the business at RMMA are general aviation and flight schools. Flight schools are the overwhelming majority. There's three hundred thousand operations at RMMA currently. Definition of an operation is a landing is one, and a takeoff is another one. A touch-and-go then counts two operations. So they do loops now of touch-and-gos, which approximately lasts seven minutes. And yesterday, on my back patio, I counted, and it's true, seven minutes for a loop. There's south loop, and there's a north loop, and they just surround the area on two different When they leave from the airport on the west, they go right over Superior. And when they come, when they leave from the airport going east, they go right over Green Knolls. In the west, for example, they do a left, left, left turn pattern. The left portion is going out to McCaslin, turning left and coming back and making a turn right over Countryside and coming down Hundred and Eighth Avenue and making another left and coming back over Green Knolls. The opposite is true if they take the pattern leaving out of, over Green Knolls. Mr. Sir Boo wants and said that he wants to see the flights being a thousand feet up. It's really hard for pilots to run these touch-and-gos at a thousand feet. First of all, to get up there, they have to go full throttle when they take off. Secondly, the weather, especially in the summertime, makes it difficult for them to get because warmer weather is not conducive to getting these small airplanes up in the air. He wanted to get to a thousand feet because he said if you double the altitude, you get a reduction of six percent in decibels. This is true, but if you're only flying at five hundred feet to eight hundred feet, which most of these planes do, that means you're taking it up considerably higher in a short period of time to get to the pattern. And you're only on the downward, downwind leg, only be able to keep that distance or that altitude and that decibel reduction for three to four minutes. Now, at our last meeting, the consultants proposed routes to get to the training areas, which are up north, of going through the southern part of Westminster or going up over Superior. They asked the FAA to approve these routes, and, or they asked to see if they could get the FAA to approve these routes. Well, the community roundtable would not approve it, which, and they said that Boulder and Louisville were basically against it. And also, what was unique was Sir Boo made a presentation and said that his Boulder group would not approve his plan. I suggest that Westminster should say no also. The reasons are that from Westminster, they would be going on the south route over, say, the Western Hotel and out to the northern routes, and on Boulder, they would have three routes that would go right over Boulder. The CNR has no answers, as they have for the last four years. They spent fifty-two thousand on consultants with no results. I suggest that you, the conclusion being that we push for landing fees out there to reduce the traffic, push for unleaded gas, which has been talked about many times, and a curfew at night. Please make these part of your important decisions in the future, because I don't think the CNR is going to last very long. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
It's good to be back in front of Westminster. I'm here to lift up the people in the city in prayer. Before we pray, I want to remind everyone, we're living through a spiritual war, and no matter how dark the days may get or evil times become, God is always in control. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' victorious name, you are the God of Westminster. It is yours, it always has been and always will be. There is nothing you don't notice, nothing you haven't seen, nothing escapes you. In Isaiah forty, twenty-three through twenty-four, it states, "He reduces the princes to nothing and makes judges, and makes judges of the earth irrational. They are barely planted, barely sown; their stem hardly takes root in the ground. When he blows on them, and they wither, and a whirlwind carries them away like stubble." You are moving and making necessary corrections here and across the earth. You are victorious. You prevail, you always win. Truth conquers deceit. Father, I want to lift up those serving in our military. There are many working behind the scenes to help correct the wrongs that have been perpetrated against us. Give them the protection that is written of in Psalm ninety-one, eleven. "For he will command his angels concerning you to guard you in all your ways." Send your angels and protect them. They are doing vital work and making great sacrifices. I also lift up their families to you, who also have made great sacrifices, and ask that you give them peace. In John sixteen, thirty-three, it states, "These things I have spoken to you, so that in me you may have peace. In the world you have tribulation, but take courage; I have overcome the world." Lord, let the families know you have conquered all. They need only to rely on you and turn over all of their concerns. Finally, Father, we have traveled our own paths and disregarded your true wisdom. Forgive us and heal us. We are wrong. Your forgiveness is immense. In Psalm one hundred and three, twelve through thirteen, your word states, "As far as the east is from the west, so far has he removed our transgressions from us. Just as the Father has compassion on his children, so the Lord has compassion on those who revere him." We claim and accept Psalm one oh three, twelve through thirteen over all our lives. We need the love of your forgiveness and your compassionate touch in our lives. You paid heavily, a heavy price for our transgressions and defeated our enemy. Give us the strength and wisdom to make correct decisions. In your victorious name we pray. Amen. Thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alvin Mites. Welcome.
Thank you. As is how he goes. I wanted to say a little bit about Rocky Flats. It's a, it's an ongoing debate about how safe it is. There's a lot of, there's a lot of strong emotions, there's a lot of, there's a lot of desire to have a lot of access because it really is a beautiful area. It's easy to forget what took place there throughout the last century, the second half of last century. Two thousand and five, we had a lot of massive cleanup, largest, largest superfund site yet corrected, yet completed by the EPA. It was also, it was also very well underfunded. The soil samples that have been taking place back in twenty nineteen were done, were done as samples, it went down two inches. Any kind of construction there, any kind of development is going to go down, is going to go down much further, ruffle up a lot, ruffle off a lot of dust, and no, nothing has been done to be able to check what is that, what has actually gone down. What's going to come up if you start digging in? What's going to, what's going to change? I would encourage you, please, at least wait until some, some furthered analysis has been completed. What, if, once that development is in, it's not going to go away. That means a lot more people are going to, are going to be there, putting them at unknown risks for generations to come. My kids, I don't want them there. Schools in Westminster, they're not allowed to go there. There's no reason for that. It's a, while it might not be the most popular thing, there is, there is no risk in waiting to be able to see what could happen. And there's a ton of risk for generations that have not even been born yet and will not be born yet for hundreds of years that will be ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Randy Stafford.
Thank you, Mayor McNally, members of the council. It's good to be here. I'm Randy Stafford. I'm a resident of I'm a resident of Ken Carl in the southern metro area. I applied and was selected to the Jefferson Parkway Advisory Committee back in 2017, I think it was. And that's a committee that was established by the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority Board of Directors to, to advise the board from a citizen's perspective on the project. And my reason for applying was to have an opportunity to advise the board that I didn't think it was safe to disturb the soil along Indiana Street by digging it up with earth movers to build the Parkway. For my work on the committee, I conducted extensive research into all of the past soil studies that have been done at Rocky Flats and all of the past epidemiological studies of the populations surrounding Rocky Flats. And I synthesized my, my findings of these studies into a position paper for my peers on the Jefferson Parkway Advisory Committee. That position paper is still linked from the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority website. And that position paper eventually became my chapter in this book, which I just gave you all a copy of. This is the second book by Kristin Iverson about Rocky Flats. It has chapters by Dr. Michael Ketterer, who David Wood alluded to earlier. He's a world-renowned radionuclide soil chemist who has studied radioactive sites all over the world. It has a chapter by Dr. Mark Johnson, who was the former Jefferson County Public Health Department Director. It has a chapter by Louise Roselle, who was an attorney in the Cook versus Rockwell lawsuit that paid the citizens of Arvada damages for trespass of plutonium onto their property. And has a chapter by John Lipsky, who commented earlier tonight. So please, read this book, and I think you'll find information in there that, that will make you think. The, the, there have been plenty of studies of plutonium in the soil surrounding Rocky Flats, including the site of the Indiana Street Trail Crossing that you're contemplating building for the Greenway. And practically every time there's a study, the existence of Rocky Flat-specific plutonium is confirmed at levels representing hundreds or thousands of times background radiation and representing multiples of the allowed cleanup limit, which didn't remediate the refuge land, by the way. So there's no debate over the presence of the plutonium. It's there. What the debate is over is the impact on public health. And some studies find greater incidence of cancer closer to Rocky Flats than farther away, and a couple of other studies have found the, the opposite conclusion. But the, all of the safety determinations about the site are ultimately based on modeling and simulation software called ResRAD, residual radiation. It's a closed source program that is maintained by Argonne National Labs. And it is used to determine the estimated excess cancer risk, excess number of cancer cases in, in a population, given some parameters about exposure and dosage. And the output of ResRAD is demonstrably wrong. In the neighborhood of Five Parks, which is at the northeast corner of 86th and Indiana, there have been two cases of cardiac angiosarcoma. These have been in the news, one of them was fatal. And that's a neighborhood of some 1,600 residents. So that's one excess case of cardiac angiosarcoma per 800 population. ResRAD predicted one per 10,000 population. So its, its output is off by a couple of orders of magnitude. If we want to talk about science, I have a degree in applied mathematics, despite what David Wood said. I have further graduate education in computer science and have spent my career in enterprise software, working for Oracle the last 17 years. When CD-PHE evaluated the, when they, when they announced their plan for evaluating the safety of constructing the Jefferson Parkway, I received a copy of it, and I proposed that they test. Why don't they set up a tent with some big fans in it and start blowing some soil around while they move bulldozers through there and have some air monitors in there to see if plutonium particles are being redistributed into the wind? You could do the same thing for the Greenway Trail Crossing over Indiana Street. But I'd like to start wrapping up with, with an anecdote from my uncle. It looks like I'm running out of time. I'll have to skip the anecdote. He, he spent his career in fish and wildlife, and he wanted, he said he thinks places like Rocky Flats should be closed, fenced, patrolled, and signed, so the public knows what went on there. I urge you to withdraw from the Greenway Trail Project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Gossenheimer. Welcome.
Thank you. Today, first I want to talk about Countryside Drive. I have had a great concern about speeding on Countryside. My backyard faces Countryside, and I can see the traffic going by every day. And in particular, occasionally, I will notice one silver Subaru WRX going at at least 50 miles an hour. And for folks that aren't familiar with Countryside, this is a way for kids to get to Wayne Carl Middle School. And it also used to be the way to get to Witt, but Witt has been closed. And recently, somebody also on next door raised the same concern. So I'm not the only one that's concerned. And one thing that I did witness once was, somebody was very impatient, and they were going westward on Countryside, and there is a median near Kensington Park. And this car that was impatient decided to go with what this person on next door said, was on the opposite side of the median to pass this car at 80 miles an hour. I don't believe it was probably 80, but I see people going at least 50. And I think the speed limit is 25 on that street. So extremely concerned about speeding on that street. And as a resident of the neighborhood, I like to keep it clean. And so I regularly, when I am walking my dog, I often go that direction, and I pick up trash on the street. And I use the dog bags to do so, thank you. And then I deposited in the garbage cans over by Kensington, or by, yes, by Ketner. So I noticed I was picking up a lot of alcohol bottles. And so I decided to do a four-day experiment over last weekend. And Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in a four-block period, section between Moore Street and 100th, which is where Wayne Carl is, I picked up 58 alcohol bottles. And this is after having cleaned it up every other week before that. So this is 58 in four days. So we have a major problem on that street with speeding, you know, illegal behavior and drinking. And I did contact the Westminster Police on February 8th. I got a call back, excuse me, February 12th, I got a call back on March 8th. So I contacted the non-emergency number. And I talked to Officer Tripp, who said that he just did a short amount of policing there and caught two speeders. But then he was off to his next job somewhere else in the city. So he said he would continue, and he would talk to the night, you know, the graveyard and have them monitor as well. But in my opinion, this is a problem that needs a more strategic approach. I don't think we can have occasional police officers check. I mean, we have a major problem here with alcohol being, you know, and drunk driving, and I don't know what else. Chris advised that I not bring the bottles. I was going to bring a bag full of the bottles, just to demonstrate how many we had. So anyways, I hope that City Council will consider this, and Mark, you could maybe work with police or whatever to think about this. And the people on next door, the one person in particular, you know, she's like, someone's going to get hurt. In my opinion, it's somebody's going to get killed. I mean, it is, it's a raceway, and it's really dangerous. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention for kind of a higher level perspective. And regarding Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, I want, I just wanted to say that last week's study session was a little bit disappointing. Many of us had written in opposing the Jason Subu's proposal and had clearly outlined why. Yet, when this was discussed at the study session, people were kind of dismayed, like, well, why wouldn't people want this? Or, how is it going to make the noise worse? When we had clearly articulated that in our communications. I wrote an email later asking, why was that not discussed? And nobody responded. So I, you know, what I'd really like to plead is that we have two-way communication between citizens that are impacted and City Council about this, so that we are involved. So you look at how much the city has done in response to the dog park. You know, I know you have more control over that. But we need to do what we can as a city and citizens together to think about how to manage this airport situation. We, we can't like speak into an echo chamber anymore. We'd like to have two-way communication. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely highly advised against digging in the Rocky Flats area. Doesn't really make any sense. Leave it all be. Obviously, it has plenty of radioactive material in there. I understand why you guys want to go dig that up. Doesn't make any sense. Yep. Name's Cody Roar.
Hi, my name is Greg Yasissin. I'm a resident of Westminster. I'm a Colorado native. I grew up and still live in the shadow of Rocky Flats. A resident of Westminster. I'm going to call on the City of Council here to halt current development of and withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. The construction area of that project is located on an unremediated portion of, of the former superfund site, right? It's, it's where they found that hot particle back in 2019, which was a plutonium 239 man-made particle. I grew up, I went to Pomona High School, and I grew up seeing, you know, a multitude of my classmates be diagnosed with and die from incredibly rare cancers. I lost my father to a rare cancer. Four people on our block, two additional people after that. We watched, and plenty of people I went to high school with watched our family members suffer the same fate. We live in the areas that are still receiving settlements from past litigation regarding contamination. Those are checks that went out after the Dow cleanup, which was failed, which had failed. Our neighborhoods are in Westminster and many in Arvada, and those were considered far downwind from Rocky Flats, but obviously not far enough. Full Body Burden's a book that should be required reading for any sitting council member. Please, please pick up that book. The impact and the damage of Rocky Flats will forever be here, and at least for another 12,000 years or so. Right now, these known risks are being ignored again. If the Greenway is desired, please find another location to connect these trails or use existing trails and pathways. I know that means going back to the drawing board, but it's really important that you avoid that, that area of land. Please withdraw from the project until a new location for the pathways can be found, one that will not put our public health at risk.
My name is Ann Yasissin, and I want to comment that the risk, please withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project, because the risk, the Rocky Flats risk is too great. Please withdraw from that. I live in the area, and many people have been affected by this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Oyarzen Yasissin. I'm calling as a resident of Westminster. I request that City Council refrains from disturbing any land associated with the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. The proposed construction area for the RMG project is located on an unremediated portion of the former superfund site. This is the same location that the hot particle was found in 2019, identified as a weapons-grade plutonium 239 man-made particle. Please don't ignore these known risks that can affect our health. If the Greenway is desired, please find another location to connect these trails or use existing trails and pathways. Please withdraw from the project until a new location for the pathways can be found, one that will not put our public health at risk. I appreciate your time.
Thomas Darner, no on the Greenway Project.
Hi, this is Carolyn Farbman. I reside in Westminster, Jefferson County. It was busy last week regarding airport noise and lead. I do want to thank you all for your continued support of HB 241235. I ask that you all continue to support this bill as it makes its way through the legislative process. In fact, Attorney General Phil Weiser made a personal appearance and offered testimony saying that if necessary, he is prepared, prepared to defend this bill in court. I also want to express my gratitude for organizing the study session with the CD-PHE and posing some challenging questions. It truly brought everything into the open. As you've heard, although the CD-PHE expressed a desire to increase blood level testing in children within high-impact areas, they did not explicitly identify communities surrounding airports as such areas for testing. Furthermore, Counselor Hopp persistently inquired about how communities are expected to ensure their safety without testing, and emphasized the importance of educating communities about the dangers of leaded avgas. It's evident that the CD-PHE is falling short in serving our communities and safeguarding our children. I hope you share this perspective and continue reaching out to our state representatives, encouraging the CD-PHE to act on the valuable advice you've given to them to address these critical issues. I'd like to address the discussion Council had before the CD-PHE study session regarding the proposed daytime flight path by the Superior CNR representative. I really found it disheartening that despite numerous emails opposing this proposed path, that some City Council members suggested the community should be more open to change, since it's something we desire. This stance really upset me. Our communities grapple with the challenges posed by this airport daily, and we deserve respect. I politely request the Council read our emails, which provided evidence on why this proposed path would worsen the situation for Westminster. Remember, change doesn't automatically equate to improvement. Furthermore, my understanding is that the Council requires a vote to proceed with proposals from the CNR. However, there seemed to be some miscommunication. There wasn't a specific vote item presented to the Council on this daytime path proposal, nor was there a roll call vote. I was unclear about what the Council was voting on. It appeared to be a vote for DeMott to inquire with the CNR body about the possibility of a trial run on this daytime proposal path, not an actual vote on the trial itself. During the CNR, though, DeMott mentioned that he would vote yes on the proposed daytime path if it was told it would be in a trial, asserting that the Westminster City Council was in favor of this four to three. This statement was not accurate. Please, I implore you, ensure clarity when voting on these matters that impact our Westminster communities. Remember, as I mentioned before, this flight path already occurs when numerous aircraft are training in the air. And that means they have to do a wider swing over our neighborhood to disperse them. Incidentally, during the CNR meeting, the HMMH consultant presenting the results suggested that the most effective way to avoid noise-sensitive areas with this traffic pattern is to make it closed in and tight, if at all possible. And that really contradicts this wider suggestion made by the Superior CNR representative. And remember, you guys, when you say trial, oh, it's just a trial, we can go back. If this trial got worse, that means more lead over my neighborhood. It means more lead over my children's school and playgrounds. I don't want six months of a trial of more of this. Please review an email I sent to you all earlier today with video recordings as evidence on these matters. Speaking of HMMH consultant results, we got those. But the FAA requires unanimous CNR agreement before undertaking further research on the proposed VFR flight routes. Boulder County, led by Commissioner Ashley Stoltzman, rejected the proposed routes, effectively halting all of this work. With no consensus, the CNR's continuation is in question unless alternative solutions, like limiting touch and goes or implementing landing fees and curfews, are explored. I share this update for the Council's consideration and potential vote ahead of the April 4th CNR meeting. I hope that you will carefully watch the HMMH presentation remarks made at the last CNR to fully grasp the issues here. Thank you.
This is Jeremy Tostensen. Please withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. The risk of Rocky Flats is just too great.
That was the last one. Thank you. That brings us to our City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen, anybody who might be watching online. A quick update from some city... A quick update from some city items. So Westminster Hills Open Space, as mentioned this evening, this past Wednesday night, we had over 300 residents and community members that came and shared their thoughts and their ideas with us at City Park Rec. We appreciate everybody coming out, and we're excited about, you know, the feedback that we've received so far. We are introducing and standing up a community advisory team. The Parks, Rec and Libraries Director is creating that to essentially take that feedback and turn it into a way forward. And so we'll continue to work that over the months of March through mid-May. We did receive about 50 applications from community members that wanted to participate in that. Those are being reviewed here early this week. Those notifications will be made here by midweek, and then the first scheduled meeting will be a week from Wednesday, March 20th. As I understand it, that will be kind of some background and just introductions, and then we'll really roll up our sleeves and get going. So we're excited about that. If anybody wants to learn more, there is a website that's dedicated to the Westminster Hills Open Space, and it's linked there at the bottom of the slide. Next slide. Westy Water Portal, we're celebrating our one-year anniversary, so just over a year ago, February 14th, 2023, we turned on the water portal. At this point, we have 50% of our customer base is currently signed up to use the portal. If you look at the time series graph to the right, we've got slow and steady growth over the past 10 months, and so we're excited about what that's doing for our community's water awareness. As just as a reminder, if you're not signed up for that program and that portal, we do have the ability to provide residents, users with leak alerts should we see something that comes out of normal parameters. You can pay bills on that Westy portal, and you can certainly view historical usage for your residents online. And we can also keep up with hourly consumption data. If you want to learn more, go to our city website slash Westy Water. Next slide. Some things to know, Planning Commission meeting tomorrow evening, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. right here in Council Chambers. Inclusivity Board meeting Wednesday, March 13th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That's a hybrid meeting, so you can either join on teams or participate at the CMO conference room. The Youth Advisory Panel meeting is Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., but it's downstairs in the multipurpose room. Parks, Rec, Libraries and Open Space Board meeting goes this Thursday, March 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the multipurpose room. And our next Monday meeting is a council study session, starts at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Next slide. Information-only item, including envelopes and utility bills. Just for the group, came up with a way to have utility bills, or correction, envelopes out here at the desk for anybody who wants to pick them up. And by June, we'll be able to reconfigure our distribution and mailing of utility bills to include an envelope for those that ask. Next slide. And as always, want to be accessible, responsive, transparent and accountable. If you want to contact my office or me, you certainly can at 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfraytag@westminsterco.gov. I will respond. And as always, encourage folks to check us out on social media, so you can like us on Facebook, visit us on Instagram, you can follow us on X, or you can ring our bell at next door. Any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Councilor Azadi.
No questions, but this is for council comments.
Okay. I see, then, oh, Councilor DeMott?
I had a specific question around Westminster Hills Park. One of the public comments was mentioned about the latest in the surveys. Are we at some point going to survey some of the other ideas? Because it did look as though those were kind of the same survey. So if we're to, you know, maybe this comes out of the community advisory work, but I'm just curious, at what point do we ask feedback on some of the other ideas we've heard about?
Yeah, I would ask Parks, Rec and Library Director, Herr Mishler, to respond. He's the one, he and his team are developing the surveys.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. The, just forming the advisory team right now, we've got some really wonderful folks that have applied to serve on that. I think that as we bring together that group and search information, we'll have to take conversations with a facilitator, neutral party, and perhaps one of the recommendations, the cat, as we call it, we'll do additional survey looking under it for how to best manage that source for facility.
My two cents on it is, I think that'll be a good thing to do in the next year, you know, that we over-survey people with the same options, it tends to not go well. So I would hope, great idea, the last four years from staff that haven't seen need its way into any of these recommendations, so with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on that note, I would think that it would tend to utilize the Community Advisory Task Force to actually come up with alternative solutions. I think that was the whole point of it, so to utilize a survey at that point versus duplicating efforts.
The ideas that have been presented today, and if I'm not mistaken, we're going to talk about the idea of transitioning part of Westminster Hills Open Space to a part which is very realistic, a very, it's out of conflict with ordinances, but that's something that we want to get the group, the group as representatives, from multiple different perspectives. And I think that's the beauty of the community advisory team. We've got dog lovers, folks that love the environment and are concerned about the ecology of the site. We have folks from Jefferson County Open Space, we have a couple rep there. We have some nearby neighbors that we've asked to participate that live in, in the volume metrics. We've got some open smoke that's gone used rails, and so pretty extensive group again, the AUST recommendations made, certainly do, you know, kind of work those into what a solution might be, but as Herr Mishler mentioned, you know, there would be ideas that are generated inside of the community advisory team, and as those start developing that management plan, look like going forward, you know, can be surveyed again with options to. As I said, we're still early in this process. What the CPAs of community advisory team mean, we intend to come back after the community advisory team has come to a resolution or something that they think would be appropriate, present that to the council. Likelihood of council saying, take that back out to the community in an open forum again certainly seems plausible. And then if there are policy or legislative changes that need to be made to how we currently operate, we would certainly do the council as the prover.
Well, it does seem to me that the purpose of having the advisory team would be to actually look beyond what we currently have proposed. Seems like there's a narrow support for multiple of those options, and I thought that, you know, to the community and with sort of richness of people that are willing to participate, that we should make that a true discussion and exploratory session. So what we can, the approach we can take with everybody, I honestly, you know, it otherwise sounds like, oh, well, here's our options, and there you go. So, and you guys fight amongst yourselves to figure it out versus maybe stepping back and saying, maybe, you know, let's, here's maybe the spectrum of options and try and find something within that that works for everybody.
Mayor Protem, I appreciate the feedback, you know, and not saying that anything is limited to four options that were presented earlier. As I just said, you know, if the group comes up with bigger, better, different, more realistic ideas, we're certainly capable of reviewing those and participating. You know, as I mentioned, the council's got a rep that will be there as one of the members of the group, but looking forward to seeing what the group comes up with. And so, again, early in the process, let us work through the process. We'll see where we're at come mid-May.
Okay, thank you. I felt the same way about the, right after the meeting, and I thought I heard that people would be able to give input, and there's no place to put input. I went and looked, and so to me, it's pretty well directing to an answer, and I don't like that, but we'll see where it all goes. Okay, Councilor Azadi, council reports. Comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with, I agree with my colleagues here. I think it needs to be definitely community-driven and not from a basis that we already started from. So I assume it's early in the process. I think staff will get there, and then, because I know the community has so many ideas, great ideas on that, so that's the first thing. I have a long list. It was a fantastic set of public comments today. I'd like to start with moving to agendize a vote at the next city council meeting for the Lexington, for the city to assume responsibility for the Lexington Trail System. I think we can just get that through and discuss it next time and vote on it, if I can get a second.
Mayor, if I could, you know, the work that will need to be done is probably over four hours, so we'll need, you know, four members of the council to say that you want to do that. Whether we can pull all that data together and present that, because that gets uploaded next Wednesday, so it's really, you know, about a week away if you take out the weekend. And so, you know, staff's got a lot of things on their plate, so I'm not so sure that this rises to the level of immediacy that the next council meeting is appropriate. Certainly would be, you know, happy to discuss when and where that might be appropriate, but I would just offer that, you know, as I think I mentioned to you, we've laid out the schedule till April 29th in great detail at this point, and there's not an easy meeting to throw on another topic. And so I just ask the council to, if you want to proceed down this path, please vote, but give me some perspective on when a reasonable time to return with the information, but I would offer next council meeting's not reasonable.
So can I ask, or can I amend then to, for you to come back with us on a date so we can have a firm date on when we can vote on this?
Councilor Azadi, can I ask you a question? As I was hearing everything, and we've heard it before, I certainly believe it belongs in that column of budget requests coming in, and we're getting ready to start that in May-ish, June? So that's where I would put it.
So the budget town hall in May?
No, that we get it on our budget line item list. We should have public requests, and this probably is going to be the first one.
Okay, that's fine with me.
I don't know if they're sitting on that list or not, but I just, just so that they know it's on that list, gives everybody a chance, because staff will have to do all the prep work in order to bring it to budget scenario for us, so we know the cost, how that's all going to work, if ODPs, blah, 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 blah. They can bring us the whole scope.
That's fine with me. So we can reserve it, so I'll take that back. Next piece I'd like to talk about is, first of all, so there's been a, I've noticed a noticeable positive trend of residents reaching out to staff. So City Manager, I think you've been doing a great job of meeting with residents. They talk about it. It's been very noticeable how transparent and accessible your office has been since you've been here. So I wanted to just give you and your staff credit there for continuing to engage with residents. That's been great. Next, the legacy events center issue. Can we get back to the resident that talked about that and see what we can do?
Councilor Azadi, yes, we can. I spoke with them on Friday morning, you know, and as mentioned, the business, the event center currently has a business operating license, which allows them to operate seven days a week, 24 hours a day. There's no time restrictions on that. They do not have a liquor license, which means they can't sell liquor for consumption, but as an event center, they can allow private parties to bring in their own alcohol. And so they're operating in a legal fashion in that regard by our ordinances. And Clerk Fitch, please correct me if I misspeak here. So from a business perspective, they're operating in a legal manner. I have asked the PD to swing by there over the course of last weekend and no activities, but again, it's not really the event season, if you will. And so, you know, shared that with them, but it's on the police department's radar. I've spoken with the police chief. And then I think the other thing that I shared with the residents on Friday that I think is important is, is, you know, the success of our downtown and that, if you will, the happiness of the residents that live in the downtown, whether in multifamily, whether in townhomes, condos, or something else, is critical to the success of the downtown. And the last thing that the city of Westminster wants is for something that is on the periphery to ruin that experience. And so my message to the residents, and I think it's very, very true, and that is that we, the city, want the downtown to be successful, and so therefore ensuring that businesses located around the downtown don't ruin that experience. And so we're certainly sensitive to the event center. It's on the police department and code enforcement's radar. And for the sustainability center, you know, we certainly want to make sure that that's successful and not a nuisance to any of our residents. So agree with you wholeheartedly, and the police department and code enforcement are watching very, very closely.
Thank you. And to Carol Gossenheimer's concern about speeding and drinking as well in Countryside?
Yes, and I was unaware of that, but I'll certainly talk to the police chief tomorrow about that, make sure it's on his radar. I will tell the council and agree with Carol's, or excuse me, Ms. Gossenheimer's comments, and that is that this past summer, as city staff conducted Gateway Pride Walks, picking up the little bottles of alcohol all over the city was a norm. We would count 50-plus as we would spend two hours walking a particular part of the city. So there's a lot of trash out there in the form of small alcohol bottles, but it indicates that there's a problem where people are drinking those while driving and throwing them out the window as they either head to work or heading home in the evening, I'm not sure which, but I've certainly seen that also.
Thank you. And so I just got word that Superior is, they voted unanimously to sue Jefferson County regarding the noise situation. We've talked about CNR many times. I've, I brought up the vote to get out of CNR. I brought up the study session, you know, to have CDPHD come here and talk about it. The whole purpose of why the majority of council decided to stay on CNR, many of them said it's because they wanted to wait for the study, right? The study came, and once again, as for years now, there's been broken promises over and over again. It's a dysfunctional group, not the people, it's the consultants, it's the structure, it's just not the right way of getting about what's hap, what's, what the people want there. There, nothing has been done on the CNR piece. The only progress that has been made has been from the people pushing and pressuring those, and then we, and then we see some incremental changes from the airport. Now, the report was done. It was rejected by one member of CNR, and that's it. So $60,000 or however much that costs, gone, for something we've been waiting months and months. And I've been anticipating this for a long time, particularly as the last few months have been going on. So now there's more promises of, no, 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 we need to still stay because of XYZ, but to me, it just feels like it's the right time to chart a new course, right? To figure out a new way of addressing the noise concerns. This isn't the way, it's not going to happen, and we need to stop spending and wasting money in this roundtable, because, yeah, it gives you a voice, but what, what good is a voice when there's no one to hear it? So you all know where I stand on this. We're still in it, I'm just one voice, but I'm very disappointed, and this latest lawsuit is just testament to the sentiment across the region. It's only getting more intensified over time. Our city needs to take some leadership and to be proactive in what we want to do for our citizens. So that's all I'll say about that. And for the lead issue, also disappointing, so I appreciate CDPHD coming in last week. I think it was a very good presentation. The study itself, though, and the results are what were disappointing. It's not representative. It's an average of 12 airports. It's low testing rates, you know, they basically said everything's okay, lead's not an issue. We know that's not true. And all we asked for was education, and now we're figuring out how to do that in some side, you know, some sideways fashion, but the people need to know what's happening in their communities, and we don't have much econ- And we don't have much accountability in all these institutional organizations that we put our faith in. So I don't know what to do about that, but I want the public to know that I sympathize, I empathize. It is heartbreaking, and it's not okay. So the last thing I want to say is related to the Greenway Trail. So I, I brought this for discussion for tonight. It's in the post meeting. And this is one of those situations where we're not the only council that have discussed this over time, but we are one of the five that are still in this. And I think the body of evidence that has built up over time, we all know about the Rocky Flats, the, the history of Rocky Flats, and you've heard public comment tonight that gave some flavor of that. But this project itself has a lot of inconsistencies that go back a few years. And the path is done, right? What we're talking about is the overpass over Indiana. And I don't think we should be giving, or that we should be normalizing that recreation. Because by, by finishing this project and putting more money into it, we are legitimizing this as an area where, where we're inviting more people to come and recreate, and that's not right. You know, I believe that we have a moral accountability here as a council to make sure that we are looking out for the public health long-term and that we're looking at more than one source of facts, right? So I would like, I very much look forward to this discussion tonight. Broomfield Council, so Mayor Ghailene Castiata of Broomfield sent us a letter urging us to get out of this IGA, as Broomfield did a couple of years ago. It was a very well-written letter. She explained the precedent for the decision. She explained how seven school districts have made commitments to not even allow field trips to this area. She explained the data inconsistencies and how the testing, what they found in the soil, the soil testing was five times the remedial action level of the closure plan. So when we talk about this cleanup of Rocky Flats, let's be clear, there, there was no cleanup. That was a small remediation, okay? There is still plutonium there. And it's important that everyone knows that. As generations move into the city, fewer and fewer people know this background and know this history. But it's important that we continue to educate the public about Rocky Flats because the plutonium is still there. I'm not trying to fear monger or scare you, right? But it's just the facts. And I think it's in our moral duty to get out of this IGA, so I look forward to this conversation tonight. Thanks.
Counselor Miller.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protim. Oh, that's okay. I just appreciate everyone's comments tonight and the diversity of comments that we've heard from neighborhoods asking for assistance to community members asking for assistance with environmental justice concerns. And I don't want to repeat everything that Counselor Azadi said, but I do share his concern for both the airport impacts and our need to work with the community and work with the airport and Jefferson County to see what we can do to improve the conditions, education. So just a continued conversation with all of us. And with, similarly with Rocky Flats, I, I do have a question that I'll probably post to staff just later in our conversations on that one. You know, for all of these, it's so interesting how it, it takes a really long time for when the community comes to talk about and highlight an issue that they are experiencing tied to environmental impacts. Takes such a long time to go against where our federal government has said it's fine. I think there are a lot of motivations for assuring us that things are fine at Rocky Flats especially. And, you know, we, we need to continue to just weigh our risks and make decisions that put us in the best position to not impact public health. The, I have a bunch of questions for Lexington Trails. So just as follow-up, I'm not sure when the right time might be to, to ask them, but I, I can, I can throw them out right now. Just in consideration of the neighborhood, I'd like to understand if we have similar conditions elsewhere in the city that we've taken on or that people are experiencing. And just in the interest of equity with other neighborhoods, I'd like to know that. And also was curious to know if there's, you know, a different trail type, like crusher fines would be appropriate versus replacing with asphalt? So, let's see. The other, I did have a question regarding the Westminster Hills open space. One thing I do want to say is that I know with everybody's public comment on this, that you know, there's a huge fan base for this, for this open space to be used as an off-leash dog area. I just, for me, it's not about popularity, but it's about responsibility too. And I, I hope that that's a balance that the community advisory team can, can take Heard comments regarding the recycling center. I mean, I think it was a missed opportunity to, maybe I've done a community meeting for, for that facility. If it still would be deemed helpful, it might be something that we could do in that, to, to mitigate some of the concerns. The legacy event center, it's actually sitting in Employment Flex, as designated in the comprehensive plan, which is not commercial. And that's defined as primary uses being professional offices, research and development labs, flex office, and incubator space with secondary uses as manufacturing, warehousing, medical facilities, and support commercial, support commercial being 10% of the gross floor area for support, or 15,000 feet, whichever is less. So I would just have us reevaluate whether that's an appropriate use, particularly when we bring uses in, we are looking at traffic generation. And so this sounds like with a, with an assembly use, which is not listed in here, I would be curious to know how that weighs in on our granting them a business license and just allowing for that traffic impact. Yeah, those were my comments.
Mayor Protim, if I could real quickly. So the event center was there before the zoning took place with the Employment Flex. So it is a legal entity in its operating capacity at that site, but it's non-conforming to the current comprehensive plan.
So in 2013, it was not, it was designated commercial?
I don't know what it was before. I just know that from my research with the community development team prior to my meeting on Friday, they defined it as legal but non-conforming due to its original presence there.
Well, that's interesting. I know I, I mapped the entire city in 2013, so I would be definitely interested to know. Doesn't, I believe that was mapped Employment Flex, or some type of employment light industrial before, so.
Sure, we can certainly follow up.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of the other counselors up here by thanking everyone who came up to speak tonight. We really do appreciate it. There was a lot of really meaningful discussion that happened. I want to begin by breaking down some of the phrases we heard earlier concerning the Greenway issue, just so that we're all on the same page and we know what we're talking about. We mentioned a superfund site, and I don't know if everyone present knows what that is. And so I'll just compare that right now to a brownfield. A brownfield is a hazardous site that has pollutants or contaminant that complicate its further use, which usually means chemical spills, oil spills, and the like. A superfund site is an abandoned site with hazardous waste that has been put on the national priorities list, which requires federal funds to clean up as they are dangerous to live around, which is usually sites with nuclear waste and the like. And then I also want to break down several of the folks that spoke, which thank you for speaking, said that they work for PSR Colorado, which I also briefly worked with. And they are physicians for social responsibility who work through community advocacy to reduce hazards and exposure to public health. And so I want to thank them all. And I just say that so that we all know who we're talking about and what we're talking about. I want to further say that I have a really big thank you to the dozens, perhaps hundreds of emails that have come in over this issue. And I'll say that there is already, as we mentioned, a precedent for pulling away from this project by other cities. And as someone, you know, with an environmental background, I think that my position is probably fully expected, which is that I strongly believe we have a responsibility to our public to protect their public health and safety. And so I would like to see this put on an agenda at some point for us to vote on. Excuse me. Thank you for that. With that said, I'll move on to the Lexington property. Thanks to the folks who showed up. I want to remind folks that we did address this a few weeks back. And Sharon Harrison, thank you for coming. I walked with you on the trail a few weeks ago, and that was really great in providing some further insight in what we're looking at. And my understanding is that we were waiting on some follow-up items from city staff in regards to the cost of what taking on that trail would be. And so as we mentioned, we'll put that on the budget agenda, but first I want to make sure that we fulfill our due diligence in getting all the information. Thank you, Counselor Azadi, in addressing the recycling and the speeding issue already. So I won't go into that. I was going to mention that those were concerning. But moving forward to the CNR issue with the airport, thanks again to the folks who have come in for months now at this point to talk about this issue. The message I heard, I believe it was from Ms. Charlene, was please work with us to develop a strategy. And so I want to explore what that idea looks like. You know, we've been working through the CNR. Does that mean work with our Westminster residents directly? And I would propose that perhaps we do that, whether that's a town hall. I would prefer a more work session-oriented platform so that we can really have a true discussion to figure out what it is that our residents are looking for. And I say that because respectfully to Counselor Azadi's remarks earlier on the CNR not fulfilling its purpose, I would say the CNR did fulfill its role. We cannot control what Boulder does with them pulling out. However, they did provide us the results of their study, and unfortunately, we can't go forward with that. So now is the time to explore further options on our participation with CNR and our participation with our citizens here to figure out what our options are. I do want to say that I heard a suggestion to put a curfew, and I do wonder how would we put a curfew without the CNR? But perhaps we can explore what that looks like with our city staff, you know, what other, what other options besides working with the CNR do we have? And then I'll address the lead, which once again, the lead is a concern that the city is currently pursuing separately. And the city is doing what it can despite the fact that the regulation of lead is handled at the federal level. And we cannot affect the rate of the reduction of leaded fuel in use as that is handled by the FAA. In the meantime, we do care deeply about the health and safety of our citizens, and we have been doing what we can to pursue possible options to spread awareness of the effects of lead and increase testing locally. And so on that side, I want to assure residents that this has been an ongoing discussion around lead and that the council here not only hears you, but are also affected, and we are doing everything we can on that issue. So I would like us to focus going forward on the issue of the noise, and I would like to better understand what the ask is of the residents. Because I have heard solutions from those from the CNR, from our consultants, from those on the CNR from other cities, but I haven't heard solutions from the residents, and I'm currently very confused as to the ask. So I'm wondering what further discussions and what other options do we have to really get a full and better discussion instead of the back and forth via email and via the dais to really hear our residents and figure out how to move forward?
Counselor Demat?
Well, before we move on, I, I would like to get some sort of response from, from our city manager, you know? Is it possible? What are our options to have a, a roundtable or discussion?
Sure. I mean, if the council chooses to hold a community roundtable, a community town hall, to stand up, you know, some kind of, of work group, or, you know, if you will, to use the term, the CAT, the community advisory team, certainly happy to facilitate that, but just looking for, you know, some guidance, direction from the council on, you know, where we want to go with that.
Well, I think we should probably discuss options further, and I'm not sure if that should be now or a study session. Can we put it on agenda for a study session? That would be good.
Yes, and then what's your priority? You know, April 29th between now and then is pretty full, but, you know, if it's that important, we'll jockey some things around. You tell me.
I want to assure residents that we are doing what we can regarding the airport noise. I do know we have priority items. What are, where, April? I'm sure we can put this on the agenda for a study session in June, if that makes sense? Yeah? Okay, perfect. And then I also want to go back to the Greenway Trail. What can we do to get that on a vote?
We'll have the discussion as requested by Counselor Azadi tonight, and that's really Counselor Azadi's request to, to have a council discussion on that. So that's set up for tonight, you know, again, you know, as you heard tonight, varying perspectives on what's dangerous, what's not, what's fact, what's not. So I think the staff, you know, has certainly got a lot of work to do to, you know, pull together these various perspectives so that the council, you know, has full information, if you will, as opposed to one-sided, one way or the other. And so, you know, I would suggest that we bring back, based upon the discussion tonight, you know, do some homework and come back to the council with a, a recommended way forward, or we could just go with a study session and then proceed with the recommended way forward. Because tonight, you're not going to get that full perspective. I mean, the council has asked for a, for a conversation or a discussion about the topic, but, you know, I guess the question will be is, do you want to do, sometimes you like to do study sessions and then come back with some kind of action, or, you know, based upon what we determined tonight, we could always come back with some kind of decision. But I think it really depends on where tonight's conversation goes.
Understood. I think a study session in general is preferred. Unfortunately, before coming on to council, I did not realize that construction on this was underway. And I think that as far as I understand it, it's due to be finished by the end of this month, and so that puts some urgency on this issue.
If I could, I'm tracking that the trail itself through the city of Westminster and through our land that we control is currently complete. Is that correct? Greenway Trail is complete. The only thing is that's the outstanding item from the city's perspective is the bike or pedestrian overpass over Indiana to be able to allow people to cross outside of traffic versus at grade in traffic. And so that project has not been bid yet. It's part of our capital plan for this year. It's not been bid yet, as I understand, and so it would be bid, contracted, built. Oh, no update, I'm sorry. Why don't you come on up, Joe? Get your crutches.
Get the crutches, get the crutches.
My apologies.
I'm Joe Realy, I'm the open space superintendent. So this current status of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail, the section of the Greenway Trail on Westminster property has been completed. There's an upgrade section that still needs to be done, the last 100, 200 yards of it. The bridge is being built as part of a grant, that's the Federal Lands Access Program grant that Jefferson County is actually the lead agency on. We are a partner with Jefferson County on that. That bridge has been bid out. It is under construction now, it's just being constructed off-site, and we'll. It's just being constructed off-site and will be brought in to be placed. Excuse me. The trails that you referenced that are about to be completed are on the Rocky Flats property. That's not any control of ours. That's being done by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Those are likely to be done within the next month. That's the current status.
Okay, and so, real quick, so the trails that were completed right now or will be finished right now were not something that we as a council voted on?
The trails that are on the Rocky Flats property? No, you did not vote on them. That's within the purpose.
That helps me understand.
What the council voted on was to be a partner in the FLAT grant, which is paying for both the bridge over Indiana and the underpass under 128.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If we can get a study session or... Let's try to figure out how to do this efficiently. I'm trying not to burden our future meetings. We need action on this item. And so I'm willing to hear your suggestion on how we make action on this item, whether we can fit it into a study session or not in the next few weeks, depending on our ETA.
Yeah, again, I would offer, let's have the conversation this evening. And based upon where the conversation goes, that might drive where this proceeds or where this heads. But, you know, I think based upon what Superintendent Reali just shared, you know, it sounds like Greenway Trail on Westminster property, which we control, is complete or nearing complete. Bridge is under construction, off-site, and will be in place. But we signed on as part of a grant and we're, you know, we're a partner, but we're not the controlling agent. So again, I'm not so sure how much control we have at that point.
And the bridge, I thought we, I might have got these two conflated, but I thought the bridge, we said we were putting out for bid.
That's what I said, and he corrected me. So my bad on being uninformed, okay?
So we have no control over either of these items, despite the fact they are within Westminster?
Come on, Joe.
I want to time in, but I don't want to interrupt. We have a lot that we can get out of this. It's an IGA. We have full control to get out of this.
Should have just stayed. So where the IGA is an agreement between the five governments, Broomfield having withdrawn at one point, that is to pay for this overpass through the Federal Lands Act program. We have, as signing on to the IGA, agreed to pay a portion of that matching funds. So that's what we, and we have already paid for that. We've paid for some of the initial studies. What Westminster controls is we have granted permission to connect this bridge onto our property. So that would be the place that you're having a conversation about.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to stand for a second.
Thank you. Okay, well, as we said, we'll see where the conversation goes. But I want to make sure that this is not a discussion. I want to make sure that we have the chance to take action. And so that's where my priority lies. I would like to make sure that we have a vote in some form soon before we, before we cannot have a vote any longer.
Right, and we wouldn't be able to have a vote tonight because it's a discussion in post-meeting.
Of course.
But it could be placed on a council agenda for action in the future.
Exactly, and that's exactly what I mean. Yes, if we can get that on the future agenda to have a vote, especially once we finish this discussion, that would be much appreciated. Okay. I think that everything else was addressed because we promised to have a discussion about the CNR, so thank you.
Councilor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly share with the public that last night, four of us went to the Ralston House dinner. Which, if you don't know about the Ralston House, they're a partner of the city and a lot of other municipalities that take care of kids in bad circumstances when they either see abuse, are abused. And basically, their purpose is to give a voice in healing to young people who go through something horrible. So that's an organization that I know the city has done an IGA with in the past to build the facility in North Glen. So just a fantastic facility. If you're looking for somebody to donate money to, highly recommend that you check out the Ralston House. Fantastic partner of ours. I want to real quickly talk about the CNR. We talked about it before, and it seems that it continues to be a popular topic. I could tell you, as the person who's been the one going to the meetings and getting a lot of chippy emails, the easiest thing for me to do is say, okay, let's leave it. But I want to talk about the realities of what we can and can't do. We heard tonight that part of the reason that we're, the group is frustrated is because the way the FAA looks at these noise issues is if not all members, which should be part of what they consider the area for a community noise roundtable, participates and votes in favor of it, just one member, then nothing happens. So I don't understand the path forward if we take our ball and go home and decide we're going to, we're going to play the game by ourselves. That's not the way the FAA has laid it out, which is why prior, when I did advocate myself for us to leave the CNR, and we did leave the CNR, we were told that we weren't going to be able to do anything. And that's why we went back. That's why I was willing to step into that role and move forward with it. So it's not that we don't hear the public, it's that it's a difficult topic. It's a difficult situation. I will tell you some of the things that have come forward from the public. You know, even in the emails that we see about fees, curfews, limiting touch and goes, they are things that have been discussed at the CNR, but they haven't, you know, grown legs. Why? I don't know. I haven't always been our representative, but I can tell you that I've been here since the, on council, since the CNR was a thing. And we've heard all these topics. And I will tell you, some of the other things that we've heard recently were new ideas. So to me, it was like, well, you know, if we can get traction to try something that maybe will make even a little bit of a difference for our residents who are concerned about this, to me, it made sense. But I won't opine any longer. I just want to be clear that this is the avenue that the FAA lays out. If staff comes out with another avenue that the FAA is going to listen to, that council can look at, I am all ears. But I want the public to understand specifically why I have advocated this stay. It's certainly not because it's a fun task. I do not enjoy getting beat up or called dishonest when I'm just doing the honest thing that four members of this council sent me forward to do. It's not enjoyable to me. But it is the right thing for us to do if we want to make a difference in the way that the FAA has laid it out. And again, I'm all ears if you have a different avenue for us to take.
Everyone has said everything there is to say. We have this agenda to finish. We have another meeting to open and do. And we have three presentations and two executive sessions. So do I have a motion for consent agenda?
I haven't been able to say anything. So I have a couple of things. The CNR, I'm not exactly sure why we're staying on it because it doesn't seem like it's doing any difference other than costing us money. And the whole thing with the getting a consultant is spending $60,000, even though we only have one vote and everyone else can just tell us we can't do that anyway. I don't see the point of staying on it. I was really concerned about the Legacy Plex Center, and they're having parties or whatever until 5:00 AM by people that are trying to live next to it. I don't think any of us would want to live next to that. So hopefully, there's something we can do about that. Lexington, I think what they're asking is for the city to concrete the rest of their asphalt and do what Broomfield has done for Lexington. They took over the south side and the west side, and they're asking for the east side and the south side. Because more than the residents of Lexington use that path. And it's on the city map as a trail system. So hopefully, we can make a difference there. What else? I agree with Counselor Azadi and Counselor Carmella about the Greenway path. And I'm wondering if it's already done, we already have access to it. Do we have access to it without the bridge? So we already have access to it. So what I'm suggesting is we have some big signs, you know, enter at your own risk. This is what could happen. We have to, I think we need signage there to warn the public of what's there. Because I don't think people that have just moved to Colorado realize what was there. I mean, I've been here almost 40 years, so I know what was there. But not everyone does. So I think we need signage there to warrant, since we're stuck with it, it sounds like. I don't see any way leaving it now that it's built and it's built by the federal government, for whoever knows why. Anyway, just, and as far as the bridge goes, I think we still can vote on that, but we already have access to it. So there needs to be some kind of signage there, I believe. Thanks.
Do I have a motion for consent agenda? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8G.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
It's 9:50, and we will close this meeting and reconvene, or convene the WIDA board meeting, incorporating the roll call from the previous meeting. And do I have a motion for minutes? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the November 27th, 2023 meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes of November 27th, 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to a public hearing for Resolution 231, authorizing First Amendment to 2012 loan agreement with PNC Bank. Is there not a public hearing here?
There's no public hearing, that's just a resolution.
Is there a motion for public, or the Resolution 231? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 231, authorizing the release of property tax increment revenues to Foster Farms Business Improvement District with the First Amendment to the 2012 loan agreement with Compass Bank dated August 29th, 2012.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, adopt Resolution 231. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella.
Yes.
And Board Person, Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 232. Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 232, authorizing the Executive Director to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Foster Farms Business Improvement District in substantially the same form as attached regarding the release of property tax increment revenues generated by non-residential properties within the district to finance the district's improvements located within the Westminster Economic Development Authority's North Huron Urban Renewal Area.
Vice Chair Normella.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 232. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Vice Chair Normella.
Yes.
Board Member Ireland.
Yes.
And Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
It's now 9:53, and we're adjourned. And we now move into post-meeting, and we have three post-meeting presentations and two executive sessions. Mr. Frankel, can you please read the executive titles into the record? And we will poll council to see if we agree to go into executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the purpose of the executive session titles, I'd ask that council make it clear we're reconvening in an open meeting so that you can vote as to whether or not you wish to enter into these executive sessions. The first executive session that's scheduled for tonight is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed development assistance agreement involving a proposed development at 3551 West 71st Place and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to CRS 2464024E1 and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C4 and 7.
I will ask each counselor to state their name and if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie Azadi, yes?
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Thank you. And Mayor, the second executive session that's proposed tonight is for a discussion of a personnel matter, a quarterly check-in on annual review process specific to the city attorney pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
I'll poll council again if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie Azadi, yes?
Clara Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
Okay, you want a 10-minute break?